Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular township council meeting on October 21st, 2014. Mr. Peluso?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements in the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board to municipal billing on December 18th, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared about the daily record on December 20th, 2013, and the Star Ledger on December 23rd, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2013. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parsipity.net.
Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Council President Karifi.
Here. Also present Mayor James R. Barberio, L. M. Sandman, Business Administrator, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancey Wazermus Township Clerk, Ann M. Coochie, CFO. Upcoming meetings, November 12th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m., agenda meeting. Note, this is a Wednesday. And November 25th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m., regular meeting. Okay, at this time, we're going to be going into closed session. It should be brief. Resolution whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas a township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas a township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege in the following litigation matters, 2889 Route 10 LLC versus Township of Precipity Troy Hills and Sergeant Daniel Bendis versus Township of Precipity Troy Hills. And whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore, be it resolved by the township council of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Second. Motion to adjourn made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. At this time, we'll have special presentations by Mayor Barberio. We'll be presenting proclamations to Ellen Ren and Danielle Davis from Precipity Hills High School for their figure skating achievements.
Is it working? Can you hear me? Not good, huh?
Yeah.
No, it's not. Good. Well, first of all, congratulations. I don't know how to figure skate. Unless you can go straight, I'm okay. Township of Precipity Troy Hills proclamation, whereas Danielle Davis, an honest student and active sophomore at Precipity Hills High School, is the winner of the gold medal at the U.S. Figure Skating National Solo Dance Series in the silver level held in Colorado Springs, September 20th to... Excuse me. Woo. September 17th to 20th, 2014, where she completed against girls from across the United States. And whereas, in order to qualify for the nationals, it was necessary for Danielle to place in the top six for her level and region. With an outstanding performance, she ranked first in the silver dances for the North Atlantic Region, which paved the way to compete in the nationals. And whereas Danielle Davis... Did I say your name right? Oh, good. Started skating at the age of four and became an ice dancer merely three years ago. As a talented skater, she has completed in local competitions and excelled on many levels, competing in the Morris County Open, 51st New Jersey Council of Figure Skating Championship, Southern Connecticut Open, the May Day Open, and Chesapeake Open in Maryland, and Lake Placid Ice Dance Competition and Skate, Wilmington and Delaware. And whereas, in addition to ice skating, Danielle finds time to excel in the field of music, playing the mellifone for the marching band and the double French horn in the wind ensemble. And whereas through hard work and dedication, Danielle Davis practices six days a week at 5:00 a.m. for two hours, is able to efficiently manage her time to keep up with her studies and musical obligations. Danielle Davis represents the outstanding tradition of excellence of our community's student athletes and the unwavering pride and spirit of the heart of Parsippany. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, sincerely thank Danielle Davis for her steadfast discipline, devotion, and determination to succeed, and do hereby extend congratulations to her many achievements and the pride that she has brought to her school, her parents, coaches, peers, and to the community dated this 21st day of October. Congratulations. I want Precipity Hills too, so. The air conditioner was new at the time, so. Remember? Remember what you said? Township of Precipity Troy Hills proclamation, whereas Ellen Ren, an 11th grade honest student at Precipity Hills High School, is a 2014 National Solo Ice Dance Series beauty medalist on the gold level. And whereas, in order to qualify for the finals in Colorado Springs, Colorado, Ellen Ren won a series of competitions in the eastern section, including the Princeton Open, Chesapeake Open, and the New Jersey Council of Figure Skating Club Championship. She was the recipient of the Andre Moran Memorial Trophy for placing first at the highest solo dance level in the New Jersey Championship. And whereas, Ellen was solo, a silver medalist in the 2013 U.S. Synchronized Skating Championships on the junior level, as well as a former member of the World Junior Team. And whereas, Ellen Ren and her team represented the United States at the 2013 ISU Junior World Synchronized Skating Championship at Helsinki, Finland, where they placed seventh, and the 2013 French Cup, where they placed fourth overall. And whereas, in addition to ice skating, Ellen is the vice president of the Habitat for Humanity Club, a member of National Arts Honor Society, French Honor Society, Junior Steering Committee, the Red Cross Club, the Precipity Hills Figure Skating Club, and the Precipity Hills High School Varsity Girls Cross Country Team. And whereas, with the energy and passion, Ellen Ren finds time to volunteer at Morristown Memorial Medical Center and helps out as a volunteer assistant coach for the Black Diamond Synchronized Skating Team. Ellen Ren represents the outstanding tradition of excellence of our community's students, athletes, and the unwavering pride and spirit of the heart of Parsippany. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, sincerely thank Ellen Ren for her steadfast discipline, devotion, and determination to succeed, and do hereby extend congratulations for her many achievements and the pride that she has brought to her school, her parents, coaches, peers, and to the community dated this 21st day of October, 2014. Thank you for representing the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. What's so nice is that I roamed those halls. I didn't skaten them, but I roamed them.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have some presentations. We're just going to switch the order around a little bit. Right now, we'll be having some short presentations from representatives of the insurance firms that submitted an RFQ for health insurance broker and record services from three different companies, Brown &amp; Brown, Metro Incorporated, Frankel Benefits, and IMAC Insurance Agency. So first up, we'll have Brown &amp; Brown.
Dominic Cenelli from Brown &amp; Brown Insurance.
You can take that out if you want. Raise it up.
Counsel President, if I may, because I'd like to represent us to each company that comes up tonight. As you know, we did our procurement process, and in our procurement process, we... You know what a procurement process is? I'm sure you know that. And after that, I sent letters to each of the individuals that are here today, plus the one that I selected, stating that on our form of government, but I already selected a carrier, so I didn't want them to be... I didn't want to be disingenuous for coming here tonight. So I wanted to make that clear and put that on the record.
We understand. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd also like to take note that the company that you selected did not bother to come tonight for our presentation.
And I would also like to comment, I told them not to come because they were selected by the mayor.
Okay.
And we'll get into that later, and I'll represent them.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. What we are handing out is our capabilities brochure about our company. A lot of that was included in the RFQ, which was requested by the township. Hopefully, you had a chance to take a look at that. Just a little background, Brown &amp; Brown Insurance is the seventh largest insurance agency in the country. We're a publicly held company. Our Florham Park office represents over 140 public entities in the state of New Jersey. Combined with our three other offices in New Jersey, we represent in excess of 325 public entities in the state of New Jersey. That gives us a lot of leverage in the marketplace, in marketing the insurance programs for various municipalities and counties. What we pride ourselves on is service. What we have in our office, we have in excess of 120 employees. We also set up a call center, a 1-800 call center, so your employees would have the opportunity to call a 1-800 number up. That relieves a lot of the pressure of them coming back to the administration on claims issues and explanation of benefits. We also have set up for the employees a Chapter 78 calculator. As you realize now, the employees do contribute to their health insurance, so we've done at Brown &amp; Brown to set up a Chapter 78 calculator, so when you're able to show the employees various different plans and the price of those plans, you're able to plug into their salary what the plan design would be and what would it cost the employees. We also have set up different websites where we could put onto the website all the information for the township as far as their benefits, as far as picking out the forms, and so forth like that. Tom will get into a little bit of our marketing strategy.
Thank you. So as Dominic said, you know, we do have a very large presence here in New Jersey as the number one broker for benefits here in New Jersey. With that comes a lot of market leverage, and so what we encourage our clients to do is to leverage those services and go out to market on an annual basis and look at all the other alternatives that are out there, whether it be all the commercial carriers, there's five or six major ones here in New Jersey, or some of the local TPAs if you're on a self-insured basis, or even the HITS if you're familiar with how those work throughout the state of New Jersey as well. And we also encourage our clients, public clients, to look at the state health benefits program. That may not be compliant with your union contracts, but we can look at avenues to make the employee whole if they go into the state health benefit program and are realized true savings there. And so when we do that, then we come out and we will then work with all the employees and work with your unions with negotiations, work with the administrative staff here also to develop budgets and project the cost out for the future. You have probably a Gatsby liability, we can assist with that as well. As Dominic also mentioned, with Chapter 78 on the horizon now, or I don't know what year you are in, Chapter 78, a lot of employees have a lot of questions. So we encourage our clients to offer lower-cost alternatives that they can voluntarily buy down. So we all know with the ACA provisions coming down the pike, the Cadillac tax hits in 2018, and a lot of public entities have a problem right now that their costs right now are in excess of that Cadillac tax for a family, which is $27,500. It's things like that that you need to start thinking about for the future. And so we're here to assist you, and we have a lot of market leverage here, a lot of expertise that we think we could do a very good job with.
Open it up to any questions from members of the governing body?
I have a question. You're located in Florham Park, New Jersey, so you're in Morris County, right?
Yes.
You had indicated that you have a 1-800 number. Do you also have a wellness program?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit about the wellness program you have for employees?
Well, we could do a myriad of things. I noticed you had some literature up on the wall out here when I walked in, that you have engaged an outside firm to do some wellness coaching, and we certainly have the capabilities to do those type of services well. We've also had some luck with getting employees to buy into the whole process as well. What we do is we would start a wellness committee and start... The employees would start suggesting topics to roll out to the employee community here. You know, the things that come off the top of your head, obviously smoking cessation, diabetes compliance, heart disease, and things of that nature, all the preventative care features that people should be taking care of on an annual basis. Then we engage the local medical community into this whole process, whether it be St. Clair's Riverside, or Atlantic Healthcare, or whoever might be, that we can use and leverage some of their services to come help us roll out a wellness program as well. But we certainly then also have access to outside vendors, just like the flyer out there that I saw. We have other ones we can use, Seridian, WellNow, there's a whole myriad of vendors that we can access for those type of services.
By engaging the local hospitals, will you be decreasing our cost?
That is obviously the intent, yes. And so we want to get your employees and their families to be compliant with their healthcare. So if you spend money now on preventative-type services, that's going to avert a major catastrophic claim down the road.
Can you give me the example?
A non-compliant diabetic maybe is not taking, you know, the right type of medication, so they should be taking, you know, their heart medication and things of that nature to make sure that the whole illness is being treated correctly. And so we would get the American Diabetes Association or the hospital to come in and then coach people on those type of services.
Okay, just... We already have that, so I just wanted to make it clear to the councilmen. But we also have a wellness coach that was implemented, and wellness coaches... And the wellness program has already saved us $1.1 million, so I don't know, because I looked at your RFQ, and I don't think... And I don't think you offered that at the time, so.
One of the things that we have done with other communities is part of the wellness committee is have representatives from the bargaining units be part of that wellness committee, because then they could see where the expenses are being paid on the claims and so forth. So as you get into your next round of collective bargaining, you could... Might see where maybe 10% of the employees are generating most of the claims based on some types of illnesses and so forth, and you could look at different programs. So now with the employees paying part of Chapter 78, there's more involvement with the employees, with the governing body, with the administration on putting together programs that are both cost-effective and provides them with good benefits.
Now what other municipalities do you work with right now, or county agencies?
We do Morris County. We just got appointed there last year.
We have our... In our list here, there's a list of all our clients, but some of the major municipalities, City of Newark, we do the County of Passaic, the County of Hudson, as Dominic had mentioned, County of Morris, and we do a lot of boards of ed, some public administrative services and things of that nature. So we have, I think it's over about 100 public entity clients.
You know what, Council President, if I can just interject, and if we can just go back a little bit to the wellness, one of the main weights that pushed Fairview ahead was the wellness program. Now I know you had mentioned you have a wellness program. That wellness is what I'm hearing is more of a segmented service. You know, going here, we can go to Denville, we can go to... We can go to the Diabetes Association, we can, you know, pull from different resources, which is a strategy in and of itself. The strategy in which Fairview utilizes is one that is more holistic under one umbrella. We have a wellness coach that sees, I believe the last quarterly report was over 3,000 consultations with our employees. And what's important about wellness is continuity, connectivity, and follow-through. We just recently started a program, and I believe... I don't want to say his name because I don't know if he's given permission yet, but we're kicking off our superstar program. Where an employee here, through our wellness program, got his blood pressure checked. It was 200 over 138, probably should have been put in an ambulance. As a result of that, that was a wake-up call for this employee, and today, he's happy, healthy, and he's one of our first employees we're going to focus on. One of the other things we're very proud of is cessation of smoking. To date, and just from March until August, we have six people who've stopped smoking. It's important to note that over 1,000 pounds have been lost. We just ran the Biggest Loser contest, which was a huge success. And, you know, it's important, you know, it's about strategy and it's about, you know, what works. And I could say, and I could say that our wellness program here is one that is forward-thinking in that it's follow-through to our employees, our coach is attainable, speaks to our employees, as well as discusses the family as a whole, because as we know, health behaviors are rooted in the family. So it's not just the employees. Employees also take home these good health practices, which also are part of our insurance coverage here at the township. So, yes, I appreciate your strategy you presented.
Do you have...
Can I ask a question here?
I have one question. Do you have a... I know, I see the list of municipalities and everything. Is... Do you have a wellness program that's instituted in any of these towns right now?
One of the big ones we have right now is the county union, and they have a wellness program that's implemented, and it's an employee-centric wellness program, but they've taken ownership of it and are running with it with the support of administration and the freeholders, but it's a grassroots-based wellness program.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Quick question. In regards to prescription plans, do you deal with that also in regards to prescriptions also?
Absolutely, yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about that, because that's very costly?
Absolutely. So prudent management of your pharmacy benefit is essential to controlling all your healthcare costs. And so you might have seen in the papers of recent that some of the larger pharmacy benefit managers, like Express Scripts and stuff like that, are taking a lot of initiatives by excluding some drugs that may be... What's the word I'm looking for? Maybe over-promoted by the big pharmacy companies. And so they're giving out coupons and things of that nature that would allow the employee to get his copay reimbursed by the big pharmacy company and therefore get the drug. But unfortunately, the drug, which was... Is probably a brand-name drug, is three times the cost of what the generic equivalent would be. So prudent management of the plan is to promote generic drug utilization as much as possible, but then also have some utilization management features on it, so if you have a diabetic or someone with COPD or things of that nature, making sure that they are taking their meds on a regular basis, so they can avert something down the road that could be catastrophic. So we would have... We would encourage outreach from the pharmacy management companies to make sure that these folks are compliant with their medical utilization.
Okay, great. I think a lot of folks here in New York State understand also that there's other insurance that you cover for the town besides medical and prescription. There any other insurance that you cover for the town, or you provide?
Well, all the ancillary lines, as we refer to it, Delta, or, excuse me, Delta Insurance, life insurance, Vision, any benefits that is employee-sponsored. We also roll out worksite voluntary benefits. There's benefits that are bought by the employee, but there's a payroll contribution for that service, so we do it all.
Okay. And how are you with, in regards to customer satisfaction? Because we have had complaints in the past with this insurance company in regards to bills not being paid on time, where folks are getting bills sent to them, employees or to loved ones, and it's not being corrected in a timely manner. Where are you guys in regards to making sure that the employees that work for our town are not having to chase down...
We have one person in our office just dedicated to claims handling. Okay? Then in addition to that, the 1-800 number will have the plan design of your township. So a live person answers that phone, and will know the exact plan design. So if an employee calls up and has a problem on the coverage or how their explanation of benefits came back was not covered, they have the plan designed in front of them with call. So there's two different avenues that an employee could call. They could call our office directly with a designated person that would just handle the claims, and we also... That person also handles claims that are involved in the state health benefit plan if you ever chose to leave your present setup and go somewhere else. And you also have the 1-800 number. So it's been very successful.
And also, may I add that, so, you know, if we were awarded the business, you're manned, so I... Our office is right in the market, live in Morristown, so we're here, we have a local presence, we can be here as needed and take over any kind of situation that we need to handle.
I like the fact that you're local and you're also in Morris County. You know, Morris County taxpayers, you know, we can try and give back to the people who contribute to us.
That's a good reason.
But, you know, in regards to your service records and your reputation, it's very important that our employees are given the quality of service that they're expecting. You know, I see that you mentioned Morris County, Florham Park, but I also see here on the private sector, you also service MacCalli, which is one of our largest taxpayers in Morris County. If I was to call them up, what do you think they would say about your service records and reputation?
Well, I hope they would give you a glowing review, because on the account executive, on the MacCalli account, so...
Okay.
They are a private sector employee, in very much a similar program like you, they're self-insured, and they have a smaller TPA in the state of New Jersey that processes all their claims. And so we have a lot of experience, obviously, working with the smaller TPAs, making sure that the right service levels are provided. And but we also understand the flexibility that the TPA can have to process things if they... We think something's not processed correctly or things of that nature, we have immediate access and we can get that thing taken care of right away like that. But I would think if you call up MacCalli, and I would encourage you to do it, that you would get a very good review from us.
What would Florham Park say? What do you think Florham Park would say?
I think, well, we just allow...
Florham Park would probably agree the same way. Thursday night, they voted based on our recommendation to move from one carrier to another, from out of the state health benefit plan directly to another carrier, and the savings on a conservative basis is in excess of $225,000, and we're presenting the same one to the Board of Ed, which will be another savings of a quarter of a million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional question on your contract. What is the number of years that you proposed for your contract?
I proposed a fixed fee for a three-year period.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one question.
Yes, Mayor.
And basically, it says here, I have an article here, it says, "Union County Health Broker Recommended Plan That Costs An Extra $5 Million But Kept Broker Fees Flowing." On Thursday evening, February 21st, representatives of the Union County Employee Union, CWA, and IFPTE, and interested citizens, including representatives from the Citizens Campaign, will show the Union County Freeholders that they would needlessly spend at least five... Extra $5 million, 12% on employee retiree health plan care by relying on a misleading report from the health insurance broker, Brown &amp; Brown. The awarding of the employee retiree health insurance business to Horizon and in the state health benefits plan allowed Brown &amp; Brown to continue to collect commissions of approximately $800,000 per year. I mean, you know, I just... I mean, I looked this up and I got it, if you can explain yourself.
I think that was two years ago, Mayor, and that there's a follow-up to that.
That's the 13th, that's last year.
It's a follow-up to that, and that was in an accuracy.
Okay.
That the presentation, the proposal we gave, was the most cost-effective.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
There's a follow-up to that.
That's what it says. Okay. I'd like to have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If you could just take that microphone, you can take it out of there and hold it.
the RFP response to the health insurance broker record. I wasn't sure of the format. I do have some copies of PowerPoint slides, but I wasn't sure if you read my RFP, and you're just going to ask me questions if you want to hear a little bit about what Frankel's about, so I wasn't really sure or certain of the actual format going on.
We'd like to hear quickly about your company, and if you have any material that you want the five of us to have.
Yes, absolutely. First of all, I do appreciate everyone taking, allowing me to come out and present. The information in there is just a PowerPoint presentation that talks about Frankel Benefits. But before I go down that road, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a public sector consultant, that's really all I do. I've been working for Frankel Benefits for just over four years now. Prior to working for Frankel, I was employed by Brown &amp; Brown, okay? So the firm that was here just before me. So I know everything about them. So, public sector's my life, I love this stuff, I live and breathe it. Before I was, I went over to the broker side, I used to run Oxford Health Plans in their public sector division, so I'm very familiar with collective bargaining, I'm very familiar with the state benefits program, I'm very fluent in what's going on with self-funding, because that's really where I started learning my experience in this industry, is doing self-funding products. To tell you a little bit about Frankel Benefits, we are a firm, we're located in Jersey City in New York, I have about 250 employees, I'm in charge of the public sector division, I'm the guy on the street, so I'm not just the guy here going to present to you, but if I'm appointed, I'm the actual guy that's doing the work for you as well. So I'm in charge of my service staff, my team, and inside the PowerPoint presentation there is a work chart that basically shows you how we structure, how many employees are actually devoted to your account and who's working on it. A lot of my competitors, they can't even fill that work chart out, because they don't have that many employees. Again, I have 250 employees here in the Northeast, 150 employees in New York, about 150 employees in Jersey City. My shop size is about $75 million annually, so I'm a good-sized firm here locally. So we, we really have a good flavor, we know the competition, we know the carriers, and more importantly is that we provide all the services that you folks deserve that you're probably not getting. Now, there's something I noticed, if I can, in the resolution, it talked about appointing another broker based upon having information about a wellness coaching. That wasn't in the RFP. So when I responded to the RFP, I didn't bring anything up about wellness coaching, because that wasn't requested. Okay? So I just, I don't want to get dinged on my ratings, because not having established... I own my own wellness company, Frankel does, as opposed to probably what you have now, which is Coaches USA probably, which is a third-party entity. Anybody can go get them, I can go to them, you can go to directly, you don't need a broker to do that, okay? It's an independent party, you approach them, you can get that service. Being the consultant, it helps and it coordinates things with them, but you don't need a broker to do that, you don't need that conduit. Okay? So just as an FYI. I own my own wellness company.
Are we paying for that?
Uh, well...
Are we paying the broker to go to something that we don't need a middleman for?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. We're going to talk about commissions, I'm sure, right? Is that one of the hot topics?
Yeah.
I do a lot of public sector, okay? And what I strive to do with my public sector clients specifically is I try to do a direct fee base. Now, in the RFP, it didn't stipulate that. The RFP stipulated that I would take commissions coming in from the carrier. You know, in, in my response, I responded that I would accept commissions from the carrier if that's the way the, the town, the town council chose to do that, but I'd rather cap it, okay? Either a direct relationship, you pay me directly, or I cap the amount of money that the carrier is paying me. Okay? Because sometimes the fees in these arrangements can get pretty high. Blue Cross, I took a look at your budget, you're roughly around a $10 million budget for healthcare. Blue Cross would probably pay three, three and a quarter percent on that. That's a lot of money, you know, a flat 3% on $10 million. So I wouldn't do that, I would like to work out a fee directly with you. If you wanted something with wellness that my department can't provide you, and you wanted somebody directly, like a Coaches USA, we can work that out, and I'm not going to charge you a vig on top of their fees. Okay? Anybody can go to them, anybody can get their pricing, and you can, you can come in here and, and have those services if my wellness company can't do it. Okay? There was something too that I wanted to talk to you about. I was going through some, some information with healthcare reform. Now, healthcare reform is a, is a hot topic that's out there. There was something that was called IRP that was, that existed underneath the ACA, Obamacare, if you will, healthcare reform, the Early Retiree Reimbursement Program. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. However, it's a program that under Obamacare, they put it in place, $5 billion for employers to help pay for early retirees. The whole idea was to continue benefits, continue providing early retiree benefits. Well, I noticed that you guys didn't file, and you probably lost out on a significant amount of money, because your consultant didn't provide that information to you.
How much do you think we lost?
I just got back, on Jersey City, I did their benefits, and I got them over $5 million.
$5 million back.
$5 million back, free money. Free money.
Yeah, file.
You didn't file. I have the documents, I'm not just making this up, it's all available online, but I do have the documents to show you that, you folks, what the program is.
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
And I also have a listing.
Are, are you able to give any kind of projection based on our size town, how many employees, how much money we would have gotten back if we applied for this? Any estimate?
Yes, I can do that, as well as, are you with Blue Cross?
No.
Who's your administrator?
IDA.
Okay. The, your administrator should be able to run a report for you, to show you, but the rough estimate is $2,500 per person that is an early retiree, in other words, under age 65. Not just the employee, but the spouse, too. You could have submitted those claims into the federal government, Medicare, they would have given you free money back, just for covering them. And the rough number is $2,500, that's a rough figure.
Eric, I just want to ask, what, when was the timing on that?
Well, now the program's defunct, the money's gone.
When, when was that?
It, it...
I'm just curious.
2009, 10, and 11, it ended.
Okay, I just was curious.
And the information I just handed goes over the specifics of how, how it operated and how it worked. But I noticed that you guys didn't file for it, and that's $2,500 per, for every 100 eligibles, that's basically $250,000.
Is that over the last three years, or...
It was a two-year program.
Two-year program.
So if you had 100 people between employees and spouses that were under age 65, that's $250,000, times two years you lost, so just that would have been half a million bucks. And all it took was for the consultant to do the paperwork, and I'm, again, I have 250 employees, I have four actuaries. My actuaries do the, the legwork of filing the claims into RDS, into CMS. You didn't have to do it. I did it for Jersey City, got them over $5 million back. You can call the VA over there and he'll vouch. Okay?
So you're saying the existing provider we have, our broker, did not file for two years?
What I'm saying is, I have documents that you didn't file, okay? I have information on the program, the program's over, I don't know if your, what your consultant did, but as your benefits consultants, I would have made sure you had your money.
Just to give the existing carrier benefit of the doubt, was there any exclusions that a particular town of a size or anything was excluded from this program?
No.
Okay.
Not at all. There's a lot of paperwork, a lot of man-hours, woman-hours, people-hours, creating these spreadsheets, uploading the data, I mean, the data, on some of my smaller clients, I did the same work, and what the response was from other consultants was, oh, you're too small to submit, because you would have to hire an actuary, you would have to do the, the information, and it would cost you more in actuary work than you would actually receive in a subsidy. I've heard that many times. But I've done it and submitted on, for two people, got back $7,000 for my client, one of my smaller clients. You know, and there's no charge, that's part of my fee.
Eric, just let me ask you a question. The $5 million that you got back, was that over the two-year period?
Yes, Mayor.
And how many, how many folks was that involved? I mean, the size of Jersey City, I mean, I, you know what the...
The retirees, it was roughly 1,000 retirees that submitted.
Yeah.
Do, do we know how many retirees we have that are under the age of 65 and their spouses?
That would have benefited, I mean, I can't imagine it would be...
Yeah, you're not going to have 1,000, but no.
No, I'm not saying close to 1,000, but you said 100, and that's 500,000, we would say.
I'm just using 100 as a multiplier, so, for easy math.
Right.
If it was 100 people, the rough estimate of $2,500 per person is 250.
What I'm, I'm just looking at, if, if we do have 100, that means we would have had $500,000 back to our town.
That's the way I see it, absolutely.
It was 100, I think. More like 50.
And it's not just me creating that $2,500, I've had carriers issue letters, because in the beginning, when you filed the applications, you had to provide the government with an estimate. You know, they asked you, what did you think you were going to get back? And how would you know, right? You go to the carrier, saying, here's the parameters, you tell me what I could tell the government. And so I have had the carriers give me estimates across their book of business, what the estimates were, what the averages were, and that's where I get the $2,500 bucks. I'm not making that up. Okay? I mean, it could be a little bit lower, it could be higher.
Do you have a list that were, I didn't go through your whole packet here, but do you have a list of any towns that you have in New Jersey that you represent?
Yes, sir. My, my references are in the RFP response.
Yeah, I knew there was a list.
I also listed my current clients, as well as past clients, previous clients, so if you want to call them, you can call every single one of my clients, current as well as previous, because they'll definitely give you a great recommendation for my services. Okay?
I, I don't want to correct you, but it's an RFQ that we submitted, correct? That you received?
I'm sorry, I slipped, I'm sorry, if that's what it...
RFQ it was, right?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're talking about the right thing for the public, it's an RFQ, not an RFP.
Correct, it is an RFQ.
Thank you.
And in that, you know, in the resolution, it talked about the best fees going to the current guy. Well, it didn't, it didn't ask for fees. You know, the RFQ only asked for my qualifications.
Qualifications, that's what it is.
So I'm, I'm losing out on a bid, and I'm getting dinged, I think, and it didn't ask me for what my fees were, or any of that.
And it also didn't mention anything about this wellness program that keeps coming up?
Nothing, correct, correct.
I don't know why that wouldn't be included in there.
And please, to the council, please don't confuse that wellness program with that consultant, because any consultant can bring it in.
Are, are you still with Jersey City?
No, no, I'm not.
Why not? What happened? It's introducing them as a criteria.
We're in the public sector world, and, you know, there was a new administration came in. You can still call them, they'll still give you a great reference for me and my firm. Unfortunately, we did not win the bid.
Question I have, Paula, do we have an idea of what we would have missed out on in regards to not applying that information to Fairview? You have an idea?
For the IRP program, is that what you're referencing?
Well, just generally, tell us where we could save the money, get it refunded.
Yeah, you know, I can't imagine on average a retiree's getting even close, even including spouses, close to 100, but I cannot guess for those years, I would imagine it would be more along the lines of about 50 to 75.
So either way, that would have been...
About 50 people, so.
$250,000 to $350,000 that the town would have gotten back.
It's pretty easy to take a look at, I mean, if you had your eligibility file or census, basically.
I mean, that's some, that's some data that I can certainly look into.
Can I ask another question? Because what company took your place if that...
A company out of Michigan.
Took your place?
Accra Sure.
Okay.
When they did change...
Someone's sustaining the county, huh, Rob?
Was there an administration change during that time when they had changed?
Correct, correct.
Oh, so it was due to administration change?
That's what, Mayor Phillips now?
Mayor Phillips, correct.
Mayor now, okay.
Correct.
Question for you, I see you have the borough of Kenalon, you know, if, if we were to call them, you know, as, as a town, as a town or borough, rather, what would be their indication on your service records and reputation? What would they say about you?
Nothing but raves and great things, especially dealing with their unions. You can call Councilman Cabello.
Cabello?
Cabello, correct. And he could vouch for you for my services, what I'm able to do with the unions. That's, that's a big thing, is being able to provide references to your current union population. You know, when you sit down in negotiations, you want to have somebody across the table from you that the unions can trust. You know, oftentimes, I'm not sure how it is here, I'm not making any accusations, but oftentimes, in my experience with public sector, with dealing with the unions, it can be confrontational. So sometimes having a professional that other unions can say, yeah, that guy's a straight shooter, you know, can help in negotiations. You know, it, it, because when I, when I try to negotiate on your behalf, or talk about benefits, or talk about a change of some sort, it just builds credibility. So you can even call Jersey City, and call those union leadership members there, because they all know me.
Who's Joe Bajica?
Uh, Joe...
Was he a partner in your firm?
No, that's not correct.
No?
No, Mayor, that's not correct.
Because I just was looking stuff up the other day.
It's interesting, the last three RFP responses that I presented to, that Brown &amp; Brown was in, I've had to answer this question. So I've become prepared.
Again, RFQ?
RFQ, I'm sorry, I do apologize. Here's a letter that I'll provide to the council. The last two are RFP responses, bids that I won, there were some accusations around made about this gentleman who is not an employee of my firm. Frankel Benefits is, we're highly talented, and we have talents that a lot of other consultants don't have. So we were hired as a consultant to support in doing studies and analysis, and that was the relationship with that person, that individual, and that individual had that same relationship with Brown &amp; Brown, too. So, just as an FYI, Mayor, and here's a letter from my COO to help clarify a few things for you. And those other two RFPs that I went head-to-head with Brown &amp; Brown, when, even after that was raised, I did win those bids. Okay?
Due to so many information you're providing me, which I didn't ask the previous vendor, because it's sparking some thoughts, were you called with any questions after the RFQ, or did you give a personal presentation like you're giving today?
For here?
Yes.
This is the first time I've been here.
So there's no physical presentation you've provided to...
None whatsoever.
And no follow-up questions from the RFQ? There was no Q&amp;A session afterwards?
People asking me?
Yes, for a march.
None.
No, okay.
I was called with the meeting, and then about maybe a half hour later, I got the, the letter from the mayor.
No, I'm saying when the original RFQ went out...
Not to come.
When the original RFQ went out, you had a response to it, did the town should provide you an additional Q&amp;A session for you to come down physically to present?
None was asked that I recall.
Okay.
I didn't receive any correspondence, no emails, no, no letters. The only letter I received was from the mayor, instructed me that, don't come, because it's...
I didn't say don't come, I don't think.
Okay.
I just said I'd show it's Fairview Insurance, that's what I said.
Okay.
But you can come if the council asks you to come. And I think Fairview Insurance also has Jersey City now. That's what I think, I'm not sure.
No, it's Accra Sure, the gentleman is Gary Taffet, Reliance was his firm, got bought out. I know who, who got the bid. And something else, I noticed in the RFP, there was information about pay-to-play regs. I don't do donations, so that's not going to be a problem. I did take a look at some of my competitors here, and there are individuals making contributions to the mayor's campaign.
Can you please tell us who they are?
I'd rather not.
Who's campaign?
It's available on Elect, you can take a look at it.
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
It's on the electoral court?
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
If you're making an allegation that there has been a violation...
No, I'm not.
...of the town's...
I don't understand your regulations, and that's...
All right, well...
I was trying to read it for myself.
Let's, let's, I understand you're here...
You just said it was an allegation, you just said somebody made a donation.
Correct.
He said that he was familiar with the pay-to-play and that people were making allegations, which is a not-so-subtle inference that there was an impropriety. Now, I understand you're here to make a sales pitch, but if you're going to make allegations that there were violations of the pay-to-play law, then you need to be clear about that.
Counselor, I apologize if I misled you, that wasn't my intent. I just wanted to make sure I understood the pay-to-play regulations so that I'm not, I don't become in violation.
Well, what you had mentioned is Fairview, because this was mentioned in the past reports to alleged pay-to-play violations. Reality is, can I see a copy of that Elect?
I'd much rather you just take a look at, on Elect, it's all out there.
Okay.
You can check what you want, Councilman, too, so.
Mayor, just please, I'm not trying to take this personal, we're trying to go through...
I'm not taking it personal, but he made a comment tonight, and I'm just telling you, you can, I'll bring mine in if need be.
Okay, listen, I'm not here to argue with you, we're trying to go through this methodically because we have to make a decision, and he didn't make any accusations that anybody...
The decision's been made, by the way, in our form of government, just so you know.
And also, that decision has to be voted on and approved by the council.
Exactly.
Obviously, so I'm hoping you're aware of that.
I'm very aware of it, Council President.
We're talking like adults, and let's ask adult questions. So I could go on the electoral court...
Okay, sure, Council President, yes, you can.
Probably fine, yeah. Okay, that's just a concern of mine. Okay, that's fine.
This gentleman just told us that this town lost $350,000 over a two-year period. Taxpayer money.
No, no, that's not true, Council President. You see, get your facts straight.
Okay.
Well, of course, you don't have them.
Is there further information regards to your presentation? You're doing a great job so far.
I just, my interest only is to do what's in the best interest of my clients, whether that's being on top of healthcare reform regulations, whether it's capturing subsidy. There's another program, federal government, that exists out there called Medicare Part D. I don't know if anybody on the council is familiar with that, but that's for your retirees as well. It's, you basically collect money for insuring your overage 65 people with a prescription drug program. It was a law that came around in about 2006. Most public sector is on that program, okay? Most public sector is enrolled in the RDS. However, what I've been finding out, especially larger groups like yourself, is you may not be into the new program that came about with Obamacare, with the ACA. It's called EGWIP. You know, all these acronyms out there, I know. But in essence, it's a program that enables you to double your subsidy from RDS. So instead of going through RDS, and let's say you were getting $100,000 for providing retiree prescription drug benefits, with this program, you can get $200,000. And there's no cost to you for doing this. This is just something my firm does. There's no added charges, no added fees. I have actuaries in-house that do all the attestations, and that's something that we provide. So I don't know if you are doing EGWIP, that's something I can't check on, but it's something you may want to just internally take a look at to see what, if you have that information. Employer Group Waiver Plan.
Ellen, is that something that we're doing?
I was just asking, because he's saying, it sounds like he's saying EGWIP.
I am.
You are, okay.
It's an acronym, Employer, E, Group Waiver Plan.
Okay.
Question for you regards to, I mentioned to Brian and Brown also, regards to your prescription plan. Can you tell us a little bit about it, how that works, and...
With the prescription plan?
Yeah.
Well, me, as well as Brian and Brown, really aren't going to have a true prescription plan. Brian and Brown's going to have a discount program or discount product. It's not really a prescription plan.
Okay.
But those things, everybody can offer them. It's not really a prescription plan, per se, and you can't couple it with your own personal RX benefit you have. Because what happens is these PBMs, they're providing discounts, so you can't take an additional discount. It's basically a discount card. You can't take a discount on a discount. So, but there's different things that, dealing with prescription drugs right now, I don't know when the last time you had an audit done for your prescription drugs, but this is something that should be done every 18 months at least. You know, your contracts, you should be doing medical plan audits, making sure your TPAs processing the claims accordingly. One of my larger clients, I found the administrator paid a $478,000 claim erroneously. I had that claim reversed and credit back to the entity, and I can substantiate that, too. Okay, so making sure that, I don't know when the last time you had audits done here for both medical and prescription drug. Making sure, you know, especially with prescription drugs, because it's like a black box. If you're self-funded, you get this bill, you don't know what it really makes up, you just pay the bill.
Absolutely.
You know, so to take a look at that and really see what's going on with your rebates and your discounts, because I recently found a client that wasn't properly loaded with the discounts, and I got all that money back retroactively to the original contract date.
Okay.
There's, are you folks familiar with the Citizens Campaign?
No, I'm not, no.
Okay, Citizens Campaign is a nonprofit organization that has been running around to public sector entities, trying to get those entities to adopt pay-to-play ordinances and dealing with insurance contracts, and instead of doing commission-based percentages, to do a flat fee. This is a report, and I'll leave this here, of their last analysis that they did. It was down in Mercer County, and it talks about Frankel, about the contracts we have down there on a direct fee basis, okay? Not commission, but a direct fee basis. So you can see that this is really the wave of the future, okay? Getting percentages of premiums anymore really should not be taking place. You know, if you're getting a 15% increase in a renewal, why should I, right? Unless I negotiate that with you. So just a nonprofit organization in New Jersey, they've been going around to various entities. I have nothing to do with them, other than this report that they issued, and I'm mentioned in there. Anything else that I can help address or answer?
Question on that flat fee, is that traditional within the industry, or is it usually by percentage?
Historically, it's always been percentages, but it's all going flat fee now, all going flat fee.
And you think there's a considerable savings there to a municipality?
My experience, yes, overwhelmingly, but I don't know what your current arrangement is.
If it's a percentage, usually, is that percentage shared with the municipality, or is it usually go to the broker?
No, it goes directly to the broker.
Goes to the broker.
But what happens is if you're, like, here's a commission issued from a carrier. You know, they issue what the commissions are. But if I say to them, "You know what? 3%." They say, "Okay, $10 million a premium, 3% commission, that's $300,000." If I say to them, "I don't want 3%, I don't want, I want zero," your premium's just reduced by $300,000. And then you and I are going to negotiate for a fee based upon what you're looking for, okay? And my fees are all-inclusive, with the exception if my personal wellness department can't handle some of the things that you're looking for, and we would have to bring in health coaches, well, then that would be extra, but I can guarantee you that that's not going to be anything substantial.
Can you tell me about the services you have as far as the customer service for employees to make it easy for their lives? Do you have that 800 number, and do you have a dedicated employee for the town, as Brian and Brown had mentioned previously?
Yes, I'm actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I actually have my own call center, okay? I don't have an employee sitting in a room, I don't have a receptionist answering the phone. I have a toll-free number, I have a help desk. There's about, depending, depends upon the time of year, based upon volume, but it'll be anywhere from nine to a dozen employees. That's all they do, is answer the phone.
And they'll have our plan laid out?
They'll have, we have systems that they'll have your plan documents there, and we track the phone calls, we record them, as far as log them in. At renewal, I provide you with a report in the renewal packet to show you what the phone calls were, what kind of questions they answered or asked, how it was resolved, and I use that report in the renewal process because we can oftentimes identify problems taking place with your administrator. You know, if a claim is, keeps popping up, is paying incorrectly, or if there's one issue, we can usually identify it with a trend pattern, looking at those call reports. Okay, and you guys are self-funded, so has anybody looked at you to perform a feasibility study to make sure you should be self-funded? You know, my actuaries do that, and that's no extra cost. You know, I perform feasibility studies for you to make sure that you're self-funded. I want to make sure that you should be self-funded, based upon your claim activity. Okay, so that's a self-funding feasibility study. But did I answer your question on the call center?
Yes, thank you.
Again, I have, I'm one of the few competitors out there that has a true call center. There's only one other that I know of, and they didn't respond to the RFP.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate everyone's time, and if there's any questions, you can get ahold of me. I think my contact information was in there.
Yep.
And I do appreciate it, I know it's late in this weather. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I'd just like to make note that there were some documents that was presented to us this evening. Can we direct them to the clerks so we all have a copy of those? Thank you.
You have the single letters that you just got. I don't know, I don't have that, too.
This gentleman was a widow in Manduk, and she read my exit report that he was... His name. He wasn't, but she even remembered.
You can take it out, yeah.
Make sure the button's on.
I think he turned it off.
Now you gotta see what...
Okay.
Better. Good?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Joe Murillo. I'm the president of Imac Insurance Agency. I would like to thank you at this time for the opportunity to discuss how Imac can meet the insurance needs for the township of Precipiny Troy Hills. We are an agency that specializes in insurance brokerage services for the public sector. What sets Imac apart from our competition is our ability to provide real savings and outstanding service, which you'll see in the materials we just handed out to you. Imac is not the biggest agency, but we're big enough to be the best. Bigger isn't better when it comes to savings and service. Remember, savings and service equals success. At this time, I'd like to highlight some of our recent success stories, and you'll see them in our presentation. Immediately after we were appointed the broker of record for the township of Montclair in 2011, we were able to provide a one-year extension on their dental program at a zero increase. We negotiated a minus 4.9% rate reduction on their prescription renewal. The following year, we were able to negotiate a minus 15% rate reduction on their prescription renewal. In 2014, we had a modest 3% increase. So after three years, their prescription rates are 16.9% lower than when we started as their broker. In 2012, we also negotiated moving them from the state health benefits plan to Horizon Blue Cross on a direct basis, which gave them an annual savings of $825,000. The following year, we were able to save them another $1.3 million less than the state health benefits premiums. In over two years, we saved over $2.1 million for the township. So remember, savings and service equals success. When we were appointed in 2010 to the West Essex Board of Ed as broker of record, immediately after the prior broker already renewed the prescription plan, we opened up negotiations and were able to lower their rates 5.6% in the off-cycle. The following year, we were able to reduce their prescription rates another 14%. And over the past three years, they're still minus 14.3% lower than we started. So savings and service equals success. In the city of Clifton, based on our recommendation, we switched from a minimum premium funding program to a self-insured program with aggravated aggregate and stop-loss insurance. That savings was $500,000 just in fixed costs. We were also able to negotiate changing from a self-insured prescription plan to a fully insured prescription plan, reducing their exposure, and by handing out communication literature to all their employees repetitively, we took their generic drug utilization from 38% to 67%, which gave a dramatic decrease in claims. So these are very important success stories, because we feel the township should be looking at all options and every program out there available, whether it's fundings, different mechanisms with self-insurance, minimum premiums. So this is one reason we feel Imac is successful, because we work hard to save our clients' money. We're aggressive when it comes to lowering the premiums. We never, ever sit back. When it comes to savings and service, this is what sets Imac apart of our competition. Tonight, you will be hearing from Tom Yuko. Tom's our director of consulting services, and Karen Waters, director of claims management. Tom has 25 years' experience in the health benefits field. He's worked on over 100 town and board of eds over the last 15 years. And Karen has over 25 years of customer service and has 10 years in the health benefits field. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Tom Yuko.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking time to meet with us tonight. Did I?
No, no.
It's on. Yeah, it's working. You just heard a few of our success stories. A common theme in all of them, if you read them and some of the reference letters you see in our handout, is that we've exceeded the performance of the prior broker in terms of providing savings at renewal time and delivering excellent day-to-day service. That's a pattern, see if you read the material. We believe that our firm has many advantages in providing brokerage and consulting services to our clients that help us provide this level of service. These advantages include the experienced team of professionals that you're meeting tonight, who currently work almost exclusively with New Jersey public sector clients. It's a different animal than the private sector. As Joe alluded to, I've been working in the public sector insurance in New Jersey for over 20 years. I've accumulated a very large aggregate claims database for analysis purposes, which helps us anticipate and respond to trends that are emerging in terms of claim payments. As I'm sure you know and have heard tonight probably from other speakers, health insurance brings with it many serious compliance burdens, so we have expert knowledge in the Affordable Care Act, Chapter 78, and many other statutory requirements which your plans have to deal with. We're also very experienced in administering and overseeing self-funded medical plans, like your current program. We aggressively track all large claims for our self-funded clients and closely monitor the stop-loss reimbursement process. In your handout also are some sample reports and charts and graphs which illustrate the kind of analysis we provide to our clients. We are on top of making sure that our clients, self-funded as well as our insured clients, are in compliance with the Affordable Care Act provisions like the patient-centered outcomes, research institute fee, and the transitional reinsurance fees. These are fees which fully insured plans have those fees built into their insurance premiums, but self-insured funds like yours have to pay those on an independent basis, so we make sure that our clients pay those and file those on a timely basis. We've also begun to strategize with our clients on the Affordable Care Act so-called Cadillac tax provisions. What that is, that's a provision in the Affordable Care Act which says that any health insurance plan that is above a certain value level, the premium or the cost in excess of that value level is subject to a 40% excise tax. So for example, beginning in 2018, if an employee has single coverage, that's worth $10,200 or more, or family coverage worth $27,500 or more. The amount in excess of those levels is subject to 40% excise tax, and we believe many public sector plans in New Jersey are already at those cost levels, and by 2018, even more will.
So we ask the mayor and council to consider IMAC as your broker of record. And remember, savings and service equals success. Any questions?
I have a question. The ERP program, the U R P, can you tell us about that?
E E R P.
The early retirement, yeah. That's a program under which if you participated, a lot of towns have not participated, you can get reimbursement for some of your early retirement expenses. It's an involved process, application process, many claims data. We've made sure that our clients are participating in that, but some towns have not.
Why have some towns not?
You know, I don't want to, I can say because they weren't advised to, that's all I can say. You know, some, either they weren't aware of it, either the insurance buyers did not bring them, bring to their attention, the insurance companies did not, somebody did not bring to their attention.
But every one of ours took advantage of that federal program.
Why not?
Free money.
Money for our taxpayers.
Exactly.
Do you have auxiliary services as well? You have human resources, legal, and actuarial services?
Well, yes, we do.
And do you charge additional for that?
Actuarial, we include, but legal would be additional.
And what's your audit process as well? How often do you audit the records or advise the municipality to audit themselves as it pertains to medical and as it pertains to benefits and prescriptions?
You're talking about audit, claims audits?
Yes.
Well, you know, it's an expense, so we're very well, very well aware it's an expense. It depends on results. If we did an audit this year and everything was clean, we might say, you know, wait three, five years. If it looks, if something came out dirty, you know, if the claims audit came out bad with a higher than expected error rate in the claims fair, we might say, let's look at it again in a year or two. So it really depends, because we're mindful that, and we had one client a few years ago who spent $25,000, I think the number was, and found errors of maybe $2,000, so that, you know, they weren't too happy about that. But on the other hand, they were happy there weren't errors being made. And that group, we would have said, you know, everything looks good. If we don't see any reason to change, you know, let's let it go. What's good about being self-insured is, at the very least, your large claims are being looked at in very close space with stop-loss carriers. So that's kind of an ongoing annual audit, because the stop-loss carriers, it's their money at stake, so they look very closely at the large claims. So that's kind of a, kind of an annual audit that goes on anyway.
You mentioned stop-loss. What's your ratio on that? What's your stop-loss rate?
What do you mean by ratio?
Is there a ratio or a rate of stop losses that you have?
In terms of spec, spec limits?
Yes.
We have some, most of our clients are between 125,000 and 175,000. It really varies. When they first go stop loss, they are more comfortable with a lower level. You know, we started some groups a few years ago, maybe at $100,000. As they get more comfortable, as we get more comfortable with their claims experience, more predictable, we, I think we have one group that's at 175 now.
And your contract is for how many years?
Our.
And is it a flat fee?
As a.
That you're proposing on your RFQ?
We did not put any fees in. We, we just get whatever the insurance carrier pays us.
A percentage?
Yeah, whatever the carrier's standard commissions are, which are negotiable naturally.
And how many years that contract for, when you present it?
I believe it was for one year in the RFQ.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, was that, was that a RFQ for one year?
That's what I'm asking myself, I'm trying to think.
Yeah, I think it was.
We have our qualified purchasing agent, and he's saying one year. Michael? Yeah, one year.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
An additional question for you. You know, you provide a lot of success stories, and I commend you on that. It's very, very nice to read. It's a lot to read. I just skimmed over a few of them. But I see you have the township of Montclair as one of them. If we were to contact the township of Montclair, what would be their response? And equally, what would Lincoln Park Board of Education say about your service records and your reputation?
The numbers are in the.
Yeah, I think the numbers are in there.
You have contact numbers?
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to have a presentation on the best practices inventory.
Yes, thank you very much. It's not as exciting as insurance, I'll tell you that. Anyway, each year, the state of New Jersey requires all municipalities to complete a best practices inventory. It sounds like inventory, but really, it's made up of 50 questions designed to encourage sound management and transparency through the self-examination process. And basically, we answer the questions are about finance, administration, medical, benefits, procurement. And out of the 50 questions, the township's results were 88%, which is above the acceptable percentage of 80%. The completed report was distributed to the council and the mayor, and also we went over it with the finance committee. If you want me to go into any more detail, we could, but it's also being posted up on the website for everyone to review.
Council president.
Any questions on?
Questions? What is the rating scale on that? It starts at what percentage up to?
It's actually 50 questions.
Right.
And for each one, it's two points, I guess. So for everyone that's off, it's two. So we had 44 correct, or correct, yes, or perspective. Yeah, affirmative, 44 out of 50.
And do we have an action plan for the six that we did not receive an acceptable score for?
Yes, actually, yes. That is part of what we have to do with the best practices inventory. We have to answer the reasons why we answered no, or to the negative, I guess. Some of them are kind of subjective, to be honest, when you read them.
So with that action plan, do you feel that in our future audit, we'll have 100%?
No. I don't, they change the questions every year. This year, there were 14 new questions, so we can't really anticipate what they're going to ask. One of the questions they asked was, are you part of the state health benefits? Now, for us, it doesn't pay for the township to be part of the state health benefits. As you heard the presentations today, most municipalities are moving towards self-insurance. So it's kind of a loaded question. So we responded no, saying that it doesn't pay for the township to go to the state health benefits.
So respectfully, the administration, myself and Anne, went over, went over this. And I think I'm guardedly optimistic that we'll be getting to the 90 percentile.
Right.
Because some of the things, we will be able to perform an action plan. And I'm hoping that there are not too many more questions, which are, as Anne stated. The answer, we're saving $700,000 from, you know, 2006 by going self-insurance, and of course, we said no to that question, so. But, you know, I'm confident that we'll be in the 90 percentile.
I did notice there was question 16 in reference to the CFO capable of preparing annual statements. You know, Anne, you're new, so I'm not, you know, questioning your ability on that.
Yes.
But I see we answered no, and we lost some points there. Does that have, and it says something about the audit firm. I know we're at least one quarter past our audit deadline. We're supposed to have that in June.
Yes.
Did we get dinged for that? Did we lose points?
Actually, what the question here relates to more is the general ledger and cash account balances, and I believe those were not in balance at the end of 2013.
So it's 2013.
So it really didn't have to do with the audit, it had to do with the CFO work. At the end of last year, we do, though, however, prepare the annual financial statement internally, the debt statement, and the budget from the CFO position. So we're in compliance with that part. It's really just the end of the year, so we didn't feel we could answer yes for that question. But that should be a yes for next year.
Absolutely.
I'm confident.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, bids to be taken, none. Requests for quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Ordinances, second reading of public hearing, none. This time, I entertain a motion, open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, if you come up to the mic, please state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes. Thank you. Make sure you sign in as well.
You can do it after, it's up to you.
So my, is this on?
Just to state your name and address.
Just bring it closer.
Jeff Dorfman.
You can take it out.
I think, yeah.
I'm Jeff Dorfman, and I live in the Glenmont Commons community. I think I was here back in August.
Yes.
To share my personal experience.
Yes.
So what I, what I did, last week, I went to the first HOA homeowners association meeting. And I was disappointed that we're not getting, I guess, feedback, and I'm concerned that the issues that were happening in the community are just not being taken as serious as we would like them to be taken. So I'm representing a large group of concerned Glenmont Commons people. Matter of fact, how many Glenmont Commons people? So there's a handful. I was able to rally a handful of them to join me here tonight, and there's a few, a few points I want to make. I appreciate being in front of the mayor and the town council, first and foremost. We're here to talk about the issues at some point. We want a meeting. This isn't the forum to talk about the details of the issues that are going on. It's to raise the awareness with the hope of having a separate meeting with mayor, town council members, anybody else that you feel would like to join the residents of Glenmont Commons meeting. That's what we want to do. We actually want to know where we stand with the issues. You know what the issues are, we know what the issues are. I think we could agree with that, correct? Approximately 80 out of the 270 units, 30%, 30%. I mean, I've, I've lived in a home, town home for 38 years of my life. My parents, who live in the same house, at 90 years, 90-plus years old, never, never felt.
Sir, just check that, make sure that's on.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, sorry about that.
Is that better?
So, living in homes, my parents' homes, you know, my mom and dad never experienced a water main break, a waistline break, but 80 out of 270. And as a matter of fact, there's a good handful of folks out of the 80 who have already gone through a second expense. There's a few that have gone through a third expense. We, as a community, we want to deal with this directly. We don't want to go in front of the town council. You don't want 80 members coming up here one at a time, sharing our pictures. I got pictures that I'm going to leave you with. We're encouraging all of our members, and most of them have taken pictures, to show you exactly where the deficiencies are. As adults, we know where they are. We want to share those with you. But we want to do it in a closed meeting. We don't want to do it in this forum. We hope you will allow us to do that.
Here's what I'll do. I, first of, first and foremost, this might make you feel a little bit better. I have been working on this since I became the mayor, like, I would say 2010, '11. President of Glenmont Commons approached me on it, and we've been due diligence working on it, to be frank with you, honest with you, I mean. But I have no problem, and I had Councilman DePiro with me to meet with a group of you in my, in my, in my mayor's chambers to discuss. I know that you want to have that one-on-one to discuss where we're at and the things that we have done. And I know we have an engineer that, that is studying, and I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I don't want the one-on-one. I want the residents.
That's what I mean. I don't mean just you and I. You could bring several.
But let me, let me just say this, and the concern that I have is, I personally gave my pipe into Paula.
Right.
It was looked at. It came back to me that they didn't find any leaks. I, I, I find that absolutely amazing. I'm just going to share it with you, mayor. If you look through there, you'll eventually see the water pipe and the, and the pinholes that are flying through it. So it concerns me, it concerns the residents of our community who are going through this.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
When we get a test done for, for a pipe that I gave, and it comes back no leaks, you know, I'm, I'm in public, I manage a large organization. If, if one of my guys came to me and said something like that, I'd say, get back out there and straighten it out. That's just unacceptable. So we're just not getting the results that I would think, year, two years into it, that we should be getting. We want to share with you what we're finding. There's been plenty of collapses within the ground itself. The backfill that was used, I dug up my own property, I used to lay plumbing with my.
Sir, your time's up. So if you could just finish.
You know what I'll do?
We'll set that up.
Yeah, we'll set it up.
Please.
Yeah, and I'll have Paula.
You know, excuse me, Jeff, if I could just comment here. First of all, Jeff, yes, you and I have spoken numerous times, and we'll address the pipe sample you gave. The water department is extremely qualified to test it. The sample you provided, was that the correct sample that you received from the plumber? Jeff, listen, I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying, the sample that was provided to the township was tested. Whether it's the sample that had the leak, part of it is not, I absolutely stand by the water department. Jeff, that is aside from the point. But I will say, I don't think it's a fair statement to say you have not received feedback from this township, specifically myself.
Well, here's what we'll do.
One more thing, just one more thing. We have found boulders on the lane on gas. If a gas line explodes, having these meetings, you just don't want that to occur. I want to share with you what we're finding.
And that's, and Jeff, that's what we'll do. I'll call you.
That's, that's what we need. Let's, let's get the information and.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Jeanne Tirito. I live at 173 Spring Hill Drive in Glenmont Commons. Jeff is my neighbor. I, I am one of the people that experienced a water main break, and I was notified by the town that there was a problem, that my line was leaking. So I had come to town hall to get a copy of the building code and to see what the backfill requirements are. And the code clearly states that you need to have the pipes laid in sand with gravel or gravel, and no rock is to touch the pipes in any way, shape, or form. I did not go with the trenchless system, because I wanted to see the leak, and I wanted to see the conditions of the ground around it. And the rocks that were touching my pipe, under, over, were not rocks, they were not pebbles, they were boulders. The boulders are not only on the water main, but they were also on the gas lines and anything else that was laid across that pipe. So it's a really dangerous situation in addition to the expense of having the water main fixed. I did contact Paula, and my pipe is the pipe that they sent away to be tested, but that's been 14 months now, and we don't have the results of the report. And I'm wondering, do you have the results of the report, or do you not have the report? And if not, how come you don't, since it's been 14 months? So we'd like to know.
Jeanne, did you receive my email I put out October 17th?
That, and we've gotten mixed reviews on that. I got your email that said that you got a report, and that you met with our association president and the engineer or mayor, or some, a group of people, it seemed, had met. But when we went to the homeowners association, the president said that the report was not discussed.
That's correct, because it wasn't available. And it still is not available.
So when is it going to be available? I mean, it's 14 months already.
It's been received, and it's currently being reviewed. It's missing, as I had pointed out in my email, I wanted some more up-to-date information with regard to the most recent breaks. And I don't unfortunately think Dr. Zhao's report will be able to be included in there, but right now, it's being reviewed.
So do you have any idea what kind of timeline we're talking about?
Can't be more than a couple of weeks.
We heard that like 10 months ago.
Well, listen, you know what?
Just.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm very disappointed. I know you didn't have enough time, what's going on. The only thing I would suggest, maybe with the council president, the mayor, that the council forms its own committee, which we get involved with everything else on so many other issues, and we really get involved with the folks that live there in Glenmont, because we had to keep this moving along, because it's very unacceptable to be waiting for this long. So I'm not putting some blame to anybody on either part, but we really have to get to the bottom of this. So council president.
And as I'm going to say this, though, first, we have been on it, and we, we have been in discussions with the engineer and stuff like that. I mean, and we're going to have, we get the report in two weeks. I will go over the report. We will, we'll set up a meeting with the president of the association, like I've done in the past, and we'll, we'll try to resolve it. The fact is that when we, when this report comes, and the decision's going to be made by the township, you know, we have to make a decision basically on who's responsible. That's what it's going to come down to.
Right. And clearly.
And I know, and I know, and I know you know that responsibility, you know, and stuff like that. So when we get the report, we'll go over it, and then I will, I will, you know, contact, I'll work with Paula and the president of your association, which I've done, and constantly have done.
We appreciate that, but we don't want it just to be the president of the association.
That's fine.
And no, nothing against Nancy. It's because that we would, we're all involved in this.
Right.
It's all come out of our pockets, and so we would all like to be involved in that meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
Any.
Thank you.
This way, everybody who, well, just make sure we have it again. There we have it. Yeah. Yeah. That one, but this is for this purpose, and if you would put that there for anybody from Glenmont, we want to make sure we have it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jeff, if you guys would put it back on there when you're, when you're done. Yeah.
Hi, Nancy Di Eduardo, 64 Pinfold Court. I don't want to rehash everything that Jeff and Jeanne have talked about, but I just want to reinforce that the winter season is coming up, and there's a very small window, if people have leaks at this point, for them to get them repaired. So it's really, there's a very big sense of urgency around this issue. And while I appreciate the fact that the town took the time and expense to hire the outside engineering firm to start that, this problem has many piece parts. It's a pressure problem, it's a fill problem, it's a pipe problem. And I think that we just, you know, and I think there seems to be a little bit of mixed messaging here. I have asked, you know, and the township has agreed to schedule a meeting with all of the residents. I would invite any of the council people who want to get involved in this issue and want to discuss this issue to attend that meeting, and we're looking to partner with the town. This isn't an issue where, you know, if we don't get our way, you know, you know, we're going to scream lawyer, okay? What we want to do is to work meaningful, in a meaningful way with you, and just to express sometimes legally what the town is obligated to do, isn't morally what I think the town is obligated to do, okay? You have a set of rules on the books, and, you know, you try to follow them the best you can, but at some point, when you look at the percentage of people that have been impacted, some of you have probably have friends or family members who have been impacted. I've had it happen to me twice already.
I know, yeah.
My neighbor across the street, Frank, this is his third. Jeff not only had a water pipe problem, but you had a sewer, a sewer pipe break. You know, at some point, 33%, and, you know, we're going to double-check our numbers, but I literally walked the development for the past two days to document where I was pretty certain we had leaks, comparing it to what I think the town had and what we've been tracking ourselves. That's a, that's a high percentage. That's a third of the development. And the, the problems seem to be clustered in a certain section and below. So it's the lower part of the development, and I think, honestly, you know, you're, you're cranking up the pressure to get water to homes at the top of the development, your home included.
Absolutely, that's what I was going to say, Dex.
What's your pressure is probably 70. Our pressure at any given time could be as high as 200 PSI.
Absolutely, yes.
You know, hitting a plastic pipe in the ground that's vibrating against not sand, not gravel, but rocks.
And while I'm concerned, what you're saying also is with the weather's changing, and then you're going to be.
Right, I mean, I, my first, my leak, right?
Yeah.
My leak happened in January, February. It was, you know, a pretty painful process to go through to get that pipe repaired in the middle of winter. But, you know, when you have the water department saying you have 10 days, we're going to shut your water off, you know, you have no choice, you know? Thank God, we're not taking that approach anymore. I mean, that's when we really started to hit the roof. I mean, this is not an expense people plan for, you know? And way back when this problem first surfaced, we weren't trying to work with plumbing companies to negotiate group rates. I mean, some of these people were paying $6,000 and $8,000 to have this, this problem repaired. And at least now, we have a couple of companies that are coming in and doing a reasonable, a job with a reasonable price. But I'm not even confident, given the underlying issues that are there, that anybody that's had this repaired done won't have a problem again. So I would just, again, really request that we get this group meeting set up as quickly as possible. I would even suggest that barring having the report, can't we just sit down to have an initial discussion? And then while this report is being worked through, we can at least start to get some of the key parts of the issue on the table, give all of you a knowledge base of what's going on, and really start to think about what an effective solution is. Like, one of the things we want is move us to the low-pressure system. There are already units on Old Dover Road that are connected to the low-pressure water system. The second option is install pressure-reducing valves in the street. We'll have to have commercial-grade pressure, pressure-reducing valves in our homes, or else the water things, everybody's faucet would blow off the, the side of the wall. I mean, that's crazy. And I was told by a plumbing engineer that because of the pressure in our development, they're only good for 10 years. So unless you know to check that, you're going to be replacing this valve every 10 years. So again, it's a very costly problem. I mean, I came home.
30 seconds.
Okay, I had a water leak. The second was, the, the pressure valve failed. While I was away on a business trip, I had four inches of water in my basement, you know? My insurance company dropped me. I had a fight to get, I've been with State Farm for years. So again, it really, it goes beyond just what we think is a simple water problem, okay? And again, just the gas pipes are a huge, huge concern. Okay?
Thank you. Hey Nancy, I got a question for you. I know that there was an issue where there was water that was more or less like a pond in the roadway, because it kept running and running, and nobody knew about the line had broke under the ground.
Do you know where?
We had discussed it, because the day that we were looking for the device to shut off one of the townhouses.
Oh, right, 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 right.
And we found out there was water running, and the other.
It was, it was a sprinkler problem. It ended up being, it wasn't.
Okay.
It ended up being a broken sprinkler head. But there have been other instances, for instance, you know, the open field that's up on Seasons Glen?
Yes.
I, as you know, I walk every day with dogs.
Yes, I see you.
I had heard running water, and what it ended up being was, there was a break.
There was a break, yeah.
Yeah, Justin, Lisa was involved in that, and that was going all the way down to the pump station on Old Dover.
Okay.
So, and you can see, if you go through the development, you know, if you want to take a walk one day, I'm happy to take a walk with you.
I will do that.
You could even see the cracks in the road. I mean, the premature cracking of the, the asphalt.
The asphalt, yes.
Especially on Lower Spring Hill. I mean, there are three cracks that have been there for as long as I can remember. As a matter of fact, when Justin walked the development with me, I pointed them out, and I said, this is way too early for that kind of a, you know, a crack. So if you're more, if you want, I'm more than welcome to. So if you're more, if you want, I'm more than welcome to...
I would love to be involved in...
You take a dog, I'll take a dog, and...
Yes, and with the same time, with the council, we would love to be involved to try to work with the mayor in the office here. Thank you.
Nancy, you mentioned you have, you're working on a document.
Yes.
Within a week or two, you'd be done with it also?
I think I can have it to you by tomorrow or the day. What I'd like to do, though, is, is we have a little questionnaire going out to the 265 residents, getting, trying to get a little bit more information about the types of leaks that they have, where they're pressure valve-related, where they're...
That would be very helpful, so that sounds like the two-week period is great for both...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that will work.
And then I, I walked the development, and I counted eighty-eight is where I was.
Right, we'll, we'll put some dates together that were within that two-week period, okay?
And I think, I think an open and honest dialogue is healthy for everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You know, I would just like to thank Nancy and to the members of Glenmont. Nancy has been absolutely your advocate, and Nancy has been extremely instrumental in providing me and getting many, many details and information, so thank you very much, Nancy.
Need a starting block here for this mic. My name is Pat Farner, and I live at 23 Lakeside Drive. I'll be brief. I'm just here to remind the town council, Manor Lake, the Manor Lake project, don't lose sight of it. I do have one question, though, and perhaps Ellen, you can help with that. Is there any new insights on the DEP or the EPA wetlands rules?
Yes, as, I know you received the report that I personally requested of Mr. Gumba, who is the consulting engineer for Cherry Weber and Associates. And I know you had the litany of the timing on this, and so we have not heard back from him, but he knows that, I gave him by the, prior to the meeting, meeting in November when the report, when we put the report together, I'm hopeful within a week I'll have a better update. As he stated, though, he was guardedly optimistic that, in working with our engineer, that he was hopeful that we'd get all the NJ, DEP submissions, that they would be made by December. As you know, we're dealing with the DEP, and they don't do quick turnaround.
You have no idea at this point, then, really?
The idea I have is that...
What I'm concerned about is Manor Lake was cut in half the last time they went with the wetlands. And the way it looks right now, there's about a puddle there. It's not even a lake anymore.
Well, I think the rain has actually helped. I've gotten some calls from, actually called, two calls from the folks in there, and they said the ducks were swimming, so, but that...
Instead of walking.
Instead of walking, yeah, really. So, so...
Just don't lose sight of that.
We haven't lost sight, and...
The rest of the town, please, don't forget Manor Lake.
And, and as you know, Pat, I haven't. And I do call you and email you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here from one, Parsippany, Ball Ave.
Sir, name and address. Sir, state your name and address.
My name is John Greslick. I live at 171 Ball Ave, Parsippany. And I'm here about the road. The consideration on our side of the street, the curbs were put way too high, and people are having trouble even getting in their own house, starting from the top of the hill. I was over talking to the mayor in April about this. They told me it was going to go down at least four inches. It went up another four inches. There's a lady that's eighty-eight years old that has a problem just coming out to get her mail on it. The street is going to be eight inches higher over there. I could, I could show you the pictures right here. The mayor was talking, I was talking with you, by the way. I'd like to show you some of these pictures, so you could see them. Hold on, right here. This is, we've got other people here. Right here. Here's a good example. They're going to cut a walkway into the street because they didn't want to lower it four inches. They went up another four, it's eight inches. Here, you look at this one here. The road goes, starts from here, it's down on the top of the hill, and all of a sudden it comes out eight inches up here. I was discussing with you...
Yeah, no, have we talked to Justin about this?
Yeah, I have spoken to Justin, and John, and I've spoken to you and your counterpart, Frank.
Frank is right there.
Yep.
Let me start.
He wants to talk about some other problems.
Okay, and the job is not done, John, as you know. The design has been reviewed with your concerns in mind, and at this point, there is no confirmation of your concerns relative to the design.
Sir.
Right now, the design has been laid. They were reviewed to be confirmed. The road is not even done yet. The job is not done yet, John.
But what I'm trying to say is, you're picking the road up another five inches for no reason at all. You lowered it on the top of the hill, it came down over here.
Now wait for your turn.
We're going to have to go front.
Wait your turn.
He's a little more quiet, John. I just passed him down to the...
I feel bad for the lady right here that's going to be trying to get out of her house. They're putting sores under my, under the street in my driveway to go to the other side because they didn't want to lower it four inches. And they're telling me I have to clean those sores, which I don't understand. Pauline told me that, too. It's my responsibility to clean the sores, right?
Yeah, on top of the storm, yes.
Yeah, the graves.
Yep, just have to keep it clear of, anything below is our, our job, John.
Do you close, in front of my house, I have to do this now? Isn't that the town's problem?
That's an ordinance, that's an ordinance.
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
That's the discrimination to the person. I'm seventy years old. How long am I going to be cleaning this?
I'll have councilman creep.
I hope for a long time, John.
No, that's not the point. The point is that I can insult people.
No, I'm, no, it's not an insult. John, I have been open and honest with you this whole time.
John, well, Doug, you should really address the council, yes. But I know what you're saying, and we'll definitely help you if we can.
Okay, well, we pass them down.
All right.
We have an envelope here.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Okay, the way of the land, you know, with the neighbors and everything? Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Frank Lomucio.
Thank you, Frank.
I have a problem with my street, Ball Ave.
Ball Ave?
Yes. I got over there the surveyor. He came a pole, he say you got to be ten feet by the curb. I say, "Paul, you're wrong." I got the surveyor, he got to be five feet.
Thank you. Let me stick out, as you're talking about it. Okay. You keep talking. No, you keep talking. Keep going. Are you done?
The other day, when, yesterday, he came a pole, no, yeah, pole, he came, he tell the contractor, he say, "No, put this pole, the light, five feet by the curb." He say, "You got to be ten feet by the curb." Why you got to be ten feet? You got the surveyor, that's five feet. And you want to put the, the light, the pole, ten feet. Why?
I know, I know that the assistant administrator was involved with this, but the light pole is something, something new. We're not sure. So you talked to the inspector, the person on the job, Paul?
Yeah, Paul.
And he advised that it was supposed to be ten feet, but it was your understanding that it was five feet?
Right.
Okay, we're going to have to address that, because that was not part of the discussion that we had with him.
And that's the surveyor, he got five feet by the curb.
I understand, I got, I'm going to have that information. I'm going to put it in the envelope, and we're going to, we're going to deal with the...
Please, that's the contractor, you want to put on, I tell the guy, the contractor, "No, put on, so you got to be ten feet by the curb."
I got it.
I got the surveyor, that's the surveyor, that's five feet.
Right, and can I have this copy?
Yes, sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
And now the pole, he came with the contractor, when he pushed down my prop, because you got to put the curb, the beach block.
Yeah.
He cut the, the letter Y, he left the letter Y open. Something exposed, who got to do, this response?
If this is your only copy, I'll make sure you get it back, then?
Yeah.
Okay. And you wrote down your address and a number, so, so we can, I can make sure you get that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Ellen?
Yes.
I'm just a little concerned, because if they cut the wire and they improperly capped the wire, somebody could get electrocuted.
Yeah, I'm concerned with the whole, you know, issue. I don't understand if some, if the survey was supposed to be five feet.
The survey does show five, if it's a certified copy, yeah.
Yeah, so we have to look into it, and we'll do this first thing tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you. The electric's a major concern, and we'll take care of it right away. Thank you.
I would think so.
Hi, my name is Richard Nunn. I live at 84 Ball Avenue, which is down towards Beverwick. And my problem is, my curb is fourteen inches below my property.
Wow.
And if you drove past my house at 6:30 tonight, you would have seen the river I had.
Really?
So, in reference to what they're complaining about, I'm complaining about the same thing, because across the street from me, the curb is probably up six inches. So I don't know what's going to happen. I was in Florida for eleven days, and I parked my wife's car down at the end of the driveway because they came through, cut, they cut fifteen feet up in my driveway. I said, "Don't you take that out till I get back." And come to find out, no one was there, thank God. I mean, there was, they weren't working. But in response to Ball Avenue...
What's the contract?
Right now, it's a mess, and I've been there for twenty years, and another issue is that people use it for a shortcut in the morning. You can go there anytime between seven and nine, and they're doing fifty miles an hour down that road, even the shape it's in now. There's a bus stop at Hawkins, or Condit and Ball, that they don't use. They have to walk all the way over to Hawkins now. And it's a real mess. And now this guy tells me, this contractor I was talking to yesterday, he tells me that this road isn't going to be done till next year. This originally started out as a ninety-day project, then Sam was there, the engineer, and he told me, "No, it's a hundred and twenty days." I think we've exceeded that now. So I, you know, winter's coming, we're going to have snow, I got a ditch in front of my house. If the town comes through with a plow loaded with soil, it's going to be laying in my front yard. I mean, and we're, and it's the end of October, we can get snow in two weeks. So that's, I just wanted to bring it up, I mean...
Please make sure that you have your name and your address and a phone number down there, so that we can, when we, when we speak to the engineer and the contractor tomorrow morning, we get more information for you, so that we can disseminate that as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you.
It's unacceptable.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's going to put it down.
What's your address?
Eighty-four Ball Avenue.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, just please make sure, I, yeah, on that list, yeah. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ellen?
Yes.
I just have some concerns about the days of completion for a job like that. Could we find out from the contractor what, or our engineer, what is the normal completion timeframe?
That definitely was going to be part of my query.
Because I'm also concerned about our township workers and our equipment, because if they're plowing and it's a rough surface like that, they could get caught up and break our equipment, or they can get hurt or injure somebody else. So hopefully we can get this resolved before the wintertime.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate it.
I'm hoping we can get some clarity.
Oh, my goodness.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Robin Ladewinski. I live at 65 Forest Drive, which is a lovely, lovely street, and a lovely, lovely neighborhood, and a lovely, lovely home, that has a lovely, open space behind me. I can't, I couldn't come to the last meeting because I had to work so that I could pay for the taxes for my lovely, lovely home, and my lovely, lovely street, in my lovely, lovely neighborhood, with the lovely, lovely space behind me. I'm very concerned, because when the meeting was over last week, a lot, two weeks ago, I was very excited to see that the council voted and to pull the application because of what was going on. And I am very concerned that now I see that this application is going forward, with no explanation to any of the people in the neighborhood. I'd like to know why, number one, it's going forward when it was voted by the council, no. I also like to know why we were not notified about it. And the third thing I'd like to know about is, why when something is voted, and the council is the voting party, and if the free, you were supposed to send it to the free holders, and you said that that application was being pulled, now all of a sudden, it's not being pulled? So I'd like to understand all that, so that I can live in my lovely, lovely house, in my lovely, lovely neighborhood, that I have an open space, and I pay high taxes on. Thank you.
You going to answer that, or hold it?
Whatever, I don't know if the council president would like to answer it, or... Okay. At the special council meeting, there was a closed session held where we discussed some of the issues that we need, we needed to modify. I can speak to that, right? I can, where's our attorney? I can speak to the fact that I said we went into closed session before...
You speak about closed session, about...
Just how, what was the...
Water view. The, what's the question that you...
I want to give the answer to let folks know that what action was taken, what action was not taken, and what was the end result of that, so...
Well, the, the, the question before the council at the last meeting, well, first of all, the council had already voted to submit an application for 3.5 million dollars. There was an enormous amount of time and effort, both on administration's part, on legal part, on planning part. I mean, a lot of money and time was spent preparing that application and submitting The council did not vote to rescind the application. That was not the issue that was before the council. The issue before the council was whether or not to reduce the request from 3.5 million to 3 million. The thing that prompted that request was the fact that on the Thursday before last Tuesday's meeting, special meeting, the county appraisal came in at 3 million dollars. And we were advised that the county would consider our request in the context of their appraisal. So the application is still before the Morris County Open Space Committee. It was never rescinded. Now, irrespective of what the Morris County Open Space Committee recommends by way of a grant, whether it's 3.5 million, or 3 million, or 2 million, or whatever the number is, as I indicated at the last meeting, there is no obligation on the town's part to utilize the grant. So it's conceivable, for example, if the town has awarded 3 million dollars, there is nothing to, to prevent the town from going back and having a further negotiation with our de- reality. You know, they don't have to spend the money, but there's been a lot of township resources and dollars spent on applying for the money. So, I mean, I think that's...
I think, John, if I could just say, where's that, where's the nice lady that was up here that enjoys her property? Oh, hi, how are you? What is your first name? I mean, I'll be addressing the audience, but anyway, what I'd like to say, what took place was, when we came back out of closed session, we were directed or requested by the Barbara Murray, who is the county open space chairwoman, we'll call her, that we had to modify this 4B, which was, as the council has said, our attorney has said, we needed to do that. So at the meeting, when we had an introduction of, whether or not to modify our appraisal down from what we thought at 4 million, we were requesting 3.5 million, and the special appraiser for the, for the, you know, the county came back with 3 million. When we came out of closed session, we, the question that the council answered or did not get a second on was, should we modify 4B? At that point, when we didn't get a second, I was under the impression, if we don't modify our request for 3.5 million dollars and put their appraisal of 3 million dollars, that we couldn't move forward. I did what I said I was going to do. I contacted the county at about, approximately 8:48 AM in the morning, and I said that we were not going to be able to modify 4B. We did not have the support of the council, because at that point, I took it as they were in a disagreement, that they thought the value of the property was more than what their special appraiser said. I did not get a direct directive from Ms. Murray. She didn't say, "Okay." What she did say on Thursday was, she needed a formal letter of withdrawal. It was then that, on Friday morning, I thought, "Well, let me ask the question, which I hadn't asked. If we don't modify 4B, and we disagree with your special counsel..." If we don't modify 4B and we disagree with your special counsel, so what I did was I called the director, Deana, who is the director of planning and public works for the county, and I said, "Deana, let me ask you a question. We would still like to present because, you know, Morris County, in Morris County has received over $41 million of our taxpayers' money for open space, and, you know, we would like to pursue for the funding." And based on that, she said I'd have to get back, and she went to the powers that be and she said, "You're absolutely right. You can still present because you have a right to disagree with our appraisal." And that's what, that's what happened. So I did, as I said, under the lights of the cameras and go and pursue it, but at that point I hadn't asked the question until Friday morning. And when I asked the question, I was given a direction, and that letter back from the county has been distributed to the council and the mayor. And I just would like to also say that, for the record, we did not modify 4B, and as our attorney has stated, I came here on June 16th. On June 17th, at the first council meeting that I attended, there was a resolution that was passed by four council folks for us to pursue the open space money. So as your business administrator, I was taking that directive to heart, and that's why we were pursuing the funding. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Way, 96 Ball Avenue. My neighbor, Mr. Long, will help me to explain my problem.
Excuse me, what was his address that we have it to?
96 Ball.
Thank you.
I believe they broke two lines in his yard, and they fixed them, but this is the way they fix them. This is what his front yard looks like. He's got two pipes sticking up out of here now. So, and it's not great. Like I say, he's my neighbor, and the neighbor on my other side, if you're familiar with Ball Avenue, if you come off of Bedworth Road, you go down like this, and you come up, and you go down like this. I'm right here, okay? And then I have a neighbor here, and he's on my other side. So our driveway, our, the curb in front of our house is literally at least 10 inches down below our property. I mean, if you look at the picture, you don't even see the curb. You don't see the Belgian block there, because it's all buried with dirt. But he had, again, is, he's, we're worried. We're worried about that street. I mean, and at that bus stop alone, there's probably eight kids, you know? And like I said, winter's coming. We could get snow in two weeks, and there's gonna be problems.
I just wanted to let you know, if it's okay, council president, Mike Hardy was here, and he's the QPA, and he just went to check on who the contractor is because, you know, this is a horror story, truly a horror story.
Kind of common sense, and I have to give a few words here, is that, I mean, we're hearing testimony from several different residents here. Okay, not only the contractor, but what is our inspector's doing? You should be getting that report back.
Well, yeah. That's why, that's why councilman, I just asked Mike to get the name of his contractor.
And please, that report of who the contractor was inspectors, I think that should be forwarded to the council so we're aware of what's going on.
Absolutely, absolutely. Unacceptable.
It is unacceptable.
Well, we're getting nervous because it's gonna get cold.
I understand, I understand.
And I said, you know, we gotta go up and speak to the town. I mean, we gotta find out what's going on, because the engineer is, he's not telling us nothing. I mean, and he's there, he's there every day, and we ask him, what's going on? Well, you have to go up and complain. You have to go up and complain. Who's gonna fix it?
That's not, that's not a proper answer.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have your, right, we have that, and, okay.
Did you write your name?
He signed, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Kaplan, 263 Intervale. Mrs. Samson, you said that you called the county and said you would still like to present and that you were given that direction.
No, I called the county and said, if I did not, if the council did not vote to modify 4B, could we still make the presentation? And they, then they went back and checked it out.
And that you were obviously given the direction to do that. I'd like to know who directed you to do that.
On June 17th, I took it as a sacred trust that four council person voted to say, go and pursue the open space.
I would just like the council to consider the option at this point. It's clear to me, based on last week, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, that there was no interest in pursuing this open space application with the additional money. So why are we continuing to drag this out, seeking $3 million that we may not even end up using, which should be going to some other tract of open space? Why wouldn't we just make a motion to rescind the application?
Papatacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. My first question tonight was whether or not Ellen had contacted the freeholders, and after reading the paper this afternoon, I found out she wasn't.
Excuse me, that I wasn't?
That you weren't gonna send an amendment.
Oh, yeah, but that, you know, but I did, I did do it initially and then asked the other question.
Okay. My, my point here is that the council was told that the appraisal was too high. So yes, they told, they made a direction to you to not tell the freeholders, you're not gonna amend it. Now, then you said you were given direction. Now, who gave direction to override the council's notation to you? Who, the council told you to do something, and who told you that you didn't have to do that?
Okay.
Could you give me that answer?
I don't know. Do we, do I wait till she asks all the questions, council president?
Okay.
I can remember that.
How? Because if anything, to me, I think one of the biggest things that was on your minds was the fact that the appraisal was $500,000 less than what we were gonna give them. And that was your major thing, was that the appraisal was over. And if that's the case, and you give the direction to do something, and somebody tells somebody else they don't have to abide by your decision, infuriates me, number one. If anything, it should've came back to you saying that it really didn't have to be amended. Do you still want me to file this? Because you still got that $500,000 in your mind that you may not want to ask for. So it should've came back to the council. In my opinion, you should've had the opportunity to know that reason, and again, to revote on it, okay? That would be normal procedure. Got a couple of things here? Bear with me. I also want to make this council aware, I was at a Board of Ed meeting a couple of months ago, and I was advised they set up a new ad hoc committee regarding the fields.
What fields?
The high school fields, that we went through a couple of years ago.
That's news to me.
Now, yeah. Apparently, it's being done this way because we don't get too much coverage on the Board of Ed anymore. But I've also found out that there has been, Mayor Barbario has been in communication with them regarding this ad hoc committee and working with them on it. So if the council is unaware of this, to me, again, it's a lack of transparency, it's a lack of the council knowing what the mayor's doing, what the, mayor knows what the council's doing. We're just having too many transparency problems. And I think as a, we have a liaison to the Board of Ed. I think that liaison is the person that should be doing this and working with them. My opinion.
Whatever you want to say.
Their view was told not to come by Mayor Barbario, and we had three very nice presentations tonight. I would've liked to have heard their views. In all honesty, I would've. Also, just to go into Ball Avenue, the problems they're having, I don't know who the contractors are, but they did work on the road the last time. They did a much better job last time. I'm getting a rumor that there might be some problems within their business at this point, something I heard about. But also, in their little excursion on Summit Street, they went through my fence. The panel of my fence is destroyed. I reported it to Bart Pisa, I reported it to Justin, I reported it to Paul. I want this fixed. I want it fixed as soon as possible. It is not a cheap fence. I've got a hole in my fence this wide now that anybody can get into my yard.
This is the same contractor?
Yep. Yep.
Boy.
Okay.
30 seconds.
All right, now, Councilman DePiero, Councilman Paluso, Councilman Carify, Councilman Stanton, and Councilman Valori, I as a resident would like to invite you to come sit in the audience with us. Because apparently, what I've witnessed in a lot of meetings is that anything this council has put forth to do has been overridden. And I am getting tired of our form of government being abused, and that's exactly what is happening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to now...
Go ahead.
Hello? Can I, I need to respond to that because it's very important, because as you know, those of you who know me from many years working in this Morris County community, 28 years in Morris County, 12 in the city of Jersey City, but then I came to God's country here and have worked and find this job to be a sacred trust. I have always listened, I have always worked hard, and I have always tried to do the job that I was given to and appointed by the full council and the mayor. So with that stated, I would just like to say, the reason why I had asked about the closed session is if you were at the closed session, and I won't give any part of it, one could possibly interpret, which I did, that there was a concern about the disagreeing with the value of the property. So therefore, when we came out into open session, and it was under the council's direction by our attorney that they should take a motion, Councilman DePiero said, with regard to modifying 4B, which is just a form to say that their appraiser, their special appraiser appraised it at $3 million, we had actually put in a $4 million number based on our...
Three and a half.
No, no, no. Mike, I know what I'm talking about. It has to do with, $4 million was what our appraisal, what we asked for was $3.5 million based on our appraiser. Now, as you know, appraising is not an exact science, it is truly an art. In parts of appraising, there is a objective as well as a subjective part. I would also give into testimony that my understanding of the value between four and three would, on a good day, most people would say it had a value of 3.5. When the council did not get a second to modify one part of a form of an application that was directed to the administration to submit, I submit to you that when the next day came, as I stated, I guess that was the end of the application. I contacted Barbara Murray through email, and then she called me back, and then we talked about, you know, removing the application. That's how I interpreted it. I don't know whether the council, I didn't have that part of the conversation with the council as far as did they interpret it to be the end of it. It would seem at the end of the meeting, we all had that same feeling. Then I thought, like I said, it was Thursday evening, and I said, wait a minute, doesn't a community have a right to disagree with an objective and slash subjective appraisal? And it was then that I said, let me call the person who is the person in charge of the open space, and that was Deana from the county. I called and I said, does the, does it preclude the council and administration from pursuing our application if we don't agree with changing 4B? And she said she'd have to get back, and she did. So I respectfully say to this council and this mayor and to the community that I felt I was doing my, my job at pursuing the funding for an application, that we know that not only do we hopefully get $3 million, but that we have also set aside $721,000, which is unencumbered green acres, not our open space funds, but green acres funds. And as the attorney has stated, that there is nothing that would preclude us from going back and negotiating. It may be a lesser price depending on what monies we got. And that's, that was what I did because I thought I was doing the right thing. And I turned to the mayor and council and say, let me know, you know, what, you know, what direction you would like me to take. Oh, and by the way, I have the contractor. As luck would have it, Mike stayed for the meeting. The specification as amended, it's 120 days, calendar days for the substantial completion of that work, and the contractor is, it looks like DLS Contracting out of Nutley. So we will be on this first thing tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. The anxiety that exists or the mistrust that has been established is a four-letter word. It's called deal. Because this open space is not open space, it's a deal to make an agreement with the developer instead of taking him and finishing the process with a lawsuit. We're giving the developer two sides to a one-sided story. We went through the process of democracy here in this township. The developer didn't get his way, he got mad, he's suing, but the administration appears to be still advocating for the developer. So we're gonna kill two birds with one stone. We're gonna have his development and our open space, which amounts to a looting of open space taxes for a buffer zone he would have to give anyway. So it's as if a preconceived arrangement is now a rendition, because the original letter here from this guy or half to Mr. Inglesino practically states that he's gonna walk all over this town. He doesn't expect any resistance at all, and he's gonna do it, and he has all the green lights to go, and he goes. And guess what? Surprise! We got real people here in Parcipony. We got organic democracy, and it came to, it came to tuition, and he lost. But no, our, who runs this town anyway? But the thing was, I was convinced when Mrs. Samson, when I read in the news, that it wasn't going forward because going forward is going backward. We're going to close a deal with the developer. He was such a great guy. We have a master plan, we have goals and objectives. He couldn't, he couldn't muster or pass the gauntlet of any of our objectives, not really. And I'll use redevelopment, for example. That word comes up over and over again. Why doesn't he come up with a plan to help us redevelop spaces already? But he'd rather take an aquifer recharge area. Water, we got water leaking all over the place. Here it is, right here. This should've upgraded our master plan, a Rutgers study, for nothing, for nothing. Enhancing the climate resilience to President of the United States. We're in trouble, people of Earth is in trouble. Doesn't mean anything, doesn't go into the plan. So the disturbing thing is the deal, the $3 million that's gonna be looted, not for open space, but for a deal. You gonna sit over there on a bench with your sweetie or your children and the plastic bags and all the everything, you know, the litter, Dunkin' Donuts over there changed that neighborhood already. The litter increased. That's what Parcipony has, plenty of litter, and we'll have plenty of more. And we're endangering the future. If we were real earthmen, we would think of seven generations, like the Indians or the mountain men in Afghanistan do. It's not, you don't own anything, you possess it for a while, you have responsibility. Land is an element of life, and it shouldn't be used as commodity and taken lightly for tax ratables, which amount to nothing, jobs with no future. And I forgot the other thing they were trying to promote, but there was three of them. Oh, yeah, affordable housing. We have more than enough affordable housing. All these things are false flags to get you to believe it's something that has no value, where the real value is we, if we have $41 million, we should be entitled to have that property reassessed and get it all or nothing at all. Leave it the way it is. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a correction on the $41 million. No, we don't have it. We gave it to the county, so that's what I was talking about. So, but it's still $41 million that, you know, was in the name given by the taxpayers of Parcipony.
But is that all that's in the fund? Is 41...
No, 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 no. 41, no, there's more in the county fund, but that's what Parcipony gave, $41 million.
Okay. Go ahead.
That's why, yep, that's what I thought I was gonna do.
Good evening. Kurt Hardenberg, 85 Red Gate Road. I wish I didn't have to be here. This is just going on and on and on. The council voted, Waterview down. I can't agree with more what Nick or anyone else that spoke tonight. When I was here at the last meeting, I said, does this mean we're not gonna negotiate? The answer was, we're not gonna negotiate. We're gonna go to court. We're going to go to court and hear the judge. I think this council said that. When you voted that down last week, that told me, and I could be wrong, her interpretation is different. My interpretation was, we're not going forward. We don't want to negotiate. Am I wrong or am I right? I don't know. But I'd like you guys to vote on something this evening. Let us know where we stand. This is getting old, very old. Mr. Sandman, with all due respect, when you made that phone call to the freeholders or whatever you did...
Yes.
Did you discuss with anybody before or after?
Before or after, yeah.
Before or after the phone call? Did you talk to the mayor?
Yes.
You did. Did you talk to the council?
I talked to the council on Sunday.
On Sunday?
Yes.
So they knew. How many days later did they know?
I got the information on Friday. And Sunday, I came into work to make sure that I saw...
Okay, that sounds fair. That sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not trying to be accusatory.
No, no.
Understand this.
Please know that this is a sacred trust.
First of all, the mayor has a campaign promise, oh, we're going to make it all open space. Then, when something's voted down for negotiation, he walks out pissed off. So he's not even thinking about open space. I don't think you are.
I'm going to respond to your comment.
You can when I'm done.
I will.
I have my time. I don't think you are. I just think you're a politician looking for votes. Tonight, make a vote. Tell him and him what you want to do. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to respond after the president. I'm going to respond.
Good.
I did say, back in October, we should try to purchase for open space. I had a meeting with a committee of residents from Lake Intervale and Intervale. And I met with the Morris County Land Conservancy. And I spoke to the chairwoman of the Open Space Committee, Anne Grassi. I told them what our intentions were to do. A week or two later, we get sued. But I did have that meeting. And I discussed with the residents in that meeting, that's going to be very difficult to get the whole entire tract for open space. I spoke to the land conservancy and they said that sometimes it's better to get half of it than none of it. And this is what was said. That's all I'm telling you what I said. But then from that point on, I couldn't discuss because it went into litigation. And that's where we're at now. We don't have a willing seller. And that's one of the problems we're having.
You have, and for me, the last point the mayor made is important. You do not have a willing seller for the entirety of the tract. There is a willing seller with regard to the portion that is the subject of the open space application. There is only one way that I'm aware of that you can forever prevent development on the property, and that is to buy it. That is to buy it. I mean, government can regulate it and it could be a taking, but that's not applicable here. If the property isn't bought, then it will always be at risk for development. And development of the kind that is referred to in the letter before, which was not the prior zone and it was not what is contemplated by the settlement. It would be for hundreds of units of multifamily housing. And I'm not saying that that would happen, but previously I outlined two paths by which it could happen. And again, the only way to 100% ensure that that piece of property that is the subject of the town's open space application is never developed is to buy it. And right now, we have a willing seller. And the township may or may not have money coming from another source, Morris County Open Space, to put towards either substantially whole or a whole of the purchase price for that property. And so that's, I think, that's the status of where we are.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Dick Young. I live on Intervale Road. Appreciate your time this evening. Several things. One, I think before we're done here, Dave Kaplan deserves an answer to his question. I think it's really important that that be reminded, too. Two, my compliments.
Please.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I was saying that I think Dave Kaplan deserves an answer to the question that he raised. I believe it's important that that come up. I think, secondly, we need to recognize what Nick had to share earlier. I believe he hit on some very important points that I know many of you have been kind to consider in the past. The points that I have to share sort of go back in history about a year ago, on October 1st of 2013, that was a year and 20 days and 23, well, I take it back, it was a year and 24 days ago, that on October 1st, POD was reaffirmed as the zoning on Waterview. Hasn't changed. It was reaffirmed as the zoning that day. People have tried to twist that and change it and make it look differently, but it's the zoning on Waterview. And members of the council, I compliment you for what you have done, to stand behind that and to recognize that that zoning is in existence because there's some other folks in the room who just don't seem to grasp that. The fact that POD zoning mandates buffers is an important concept this evening, I think, as we talk about open space. Buffers are mandated on the property. It's not if you want to or if you think it's neat. Buffers are mandated under the POD zone. So that land is already set aside. You and the Open Space Committee of Morris County don't have to buy that land as open space because it's mandated specifically as space that is to be left along the northern and the western edges of Waterview Lot 29. So how much should the council be willing to spend and support the spending of other people's money, tax money? That would be everybody's money in here, right? How much should you be willing to support spending? Well, I like visual aids and, you know, so I brought along this one visual aid that you've seen too many times before, probably. But I brought along another visual aid that shows exactly how much money should be spent and approved.
Zero.
For that purpose of open space, and here it is here, let's see, it's absolutely nothing because it's guaranteed and the buffer goes with the zoning.
So not a single dollar, not a single tax dollar for open space that's already guaranteed as buffers. Thank you so much for your time.
Can I ask a question? Because I'm very curious about this. When you talk about the buffer of the nine points, well, the 10 acres that we're trying to purchase, and the whole property is like 33 or whatever, how much are you saying is would be because of the buffer?
Hold on a minute.
I can't even wrap my head around that.
Hold on a minute. This is old ground, but pardon me, but I have to give you some facts, some real information. First of all, there is no buffer agreement. There is no restriction in title that forever makes those buffers applicable to any development that goes on the property. That's just not true. If there is a buffer agreement, let me see it. An agreement is not...
Read the zoning.
Just a minute. An agreement is not an ordinance.
It's not an agreement. It's a zoning.
All right, you, hold on a minute. We played Law School 101. You did not, you said buffer agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
POD zoning that calls for buffers has been there since the early 1980s. I know you forgot about it several meetings ago and somebody was kind to remind you.
Mr. Young, hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. Wait a minute. Zoning can be changed, number one. Number two...
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
Number two, under the law, developments occur all the time in ways that are inconsistent with zoning. Zoning does not protect you against a use variance.
Sir, your time is up.
A use variance, by its very definition, is development that is done not in accordance with your zone. Many times, not in accordance with the use, not in accordance with the buffers, not in accordance with the zoning restrictions and regulations that are in place. There is a pathway and a mechanism in the law for developers to develop properties inconsistent with existing zoning. So for folks to think that just because the zoning is there means that you can't develop the property in a way not consistent with the zoning, that's just legally not true. That is not true. If the developer can make the proofs that are required for a use variance, then they would be able to develop the property in that way. And I have a responsibility as the township attorney to tell you that. Now, if you don't want to hear it, I'm sorry. You're entitled to your opinions, but you can't say things that just aren't true. Now, if there was, if there was an easement that established the buffers, a restrictive easement that was recorded in record in the title, that would be a permanent restriction because that would be an encumbrance on land that would go to the property. That's much stronger than zoning. There is no buffer agreement. We did a title search. I have challenged everybody here repeatedly to bring me a copy of the easement if you have it. Nobody has because it doesn't exist. The buffer that exists is created by the zone. And again, that can be disregarded either by change in the zoning at some future point or by a use variance. If the developer...
If the zoning was upheld, the zoning in and...
Okay, the zoning in and of itself does not provide you the protection...
Please, please do not talk from the audience.
The zoning in and of itself does not provide you with absolute protection from development on that property. You need to understand that. There is a risk. There is a risk that you could have undesired development on that property, notwithstanding the zoning that is in place now. That is legal fact. I have indicated that before and it's true. So, you know, let's just understand that there is a substantial risk that unwanted development could occur on that property if it's not purchased. The only way to guarantee no development on that 10-acre parcel is to buy it.
We don't have 40 million. We have 5.1...
Go ahead, man.
Diana McElroy, 37 Intervale Road. So once again, you're threatening us with what might come down the pipe if we don't agree to Waterview, is what I'm hearing. And once again, we're telling you that we're willing to fight whatever comes down the road. But we don't want Waterview and we're not open to these threats of what might come down the road. And I'm confused because the newspapers, everyone shouted that we're done, Waterview is passed. So my understanding is, Ms. Sandman, is that you will open the gateway back up. Is that correct? Like that you crack the door open?
No, I did not. No, I asked the question, if we do not modify 4B, are we to withdraw the application? The council did not vote on withdrawing the application. The council voted on or did not make the action on modifying 4B. Again, it has to come down to interpretation and communication. And I'm not at liberty to say what was in the closed session, but the council knows what we talked about in closed session. And so therefore, that was my interpretation.
So can the council make us aware of what you said or didn't say that made her...
In closed session.
Yeah, in closed session.
Closed session is closed session. The closed session dealt with settlement negotiations concerning ongoing litigation that is not appropriate for open session discussion. You know, this parcel, there is some linkage between the open space application and the settlement, obviously, and information regarding the open space application is appropriate for open session.
Linkage as in there's a deal in the works? I mean...
Clearly, we've indicated that there have been settlement negotiations and discussions and I think we've outlined the prospects of what a settlement may look like publicly at a previous meeting. So that is, that has been made public.
No. Do you guys understand what the settlement? Because I'm missing it. We don't, we don't want to settle with them. We'd like to go to court and we'd like to win, is what I think the public is saying. And we want them to realize we're not going to be bullied. And having our town attorney sound more like he's representing them than us doesn't help our case.
Officer President, I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Good.
Diana, the township attorney has just given you advice and he's given you sound advice. I know you don't want to hear it, but I'm going to tell you, I spoke to our tax assessor. Talked to him last week. I'm going to tell you what he said. It's too bad because what he said was that now, that area is subject to 400 rental units. And Danny is very bright and very smart. He knows this town inside and out. He knows the crack and crevice in this town. He said, you're subject to $50 a unit. God forbid, they come in with a use variance, you're subject to 400 units. You might not want to hear it, but that's the God's honest truth. I know it's hard to swallow and that would be something that I don't think anybody would want in town. But the fact is this, I let you speak before without interrupting. The fact is this, the township attorney gave you very sound advice, legal sound advice. You don't want to hear it. I can see that. And it's hard to swallow. I couldn't agree with you more. But the fact, when I asked the tax assessor, how much would that property go for now? Because you've got to understand something. We don't have settlement agreements without the council telling us to move forward. And we moved forward together. Wasn't just me, wasn't just the council. Okay? We have those settlement agreements. We tried to strike a deal with the Open Space Trust Fund money. We tried to go with the county. Okay? But the fact of the matter is this, I believe my tax assessor, I really truly do. And I don't want to see 400 units go there, but that's a risk. And if a use variance comes in, and exactly what the attorney is saying can happen. So we have to decide from here. What do you want to do? She wants to move forward? I mean, she, I'm sorry, I'm going to call you she. It's not wrong. I used to get yelled at when I sat in front of my mom. But the fact of the matter is this, these are the facts. Now, you're not going to like them, but, you know, those are. And I hate to say that and I hate to be this way, but that can happen.
Go ahead.
Ken Yarima, 41 Winding Way. On a good note, I have a tree, it's a township tree on my property, that I needed, the branches were kind of threatening, in a threatening situation, I called the Department of Forestry. They were there the same day. The guys were terrific. They cleaned up everything. They did exactly, in fact, they even checked with me, what about this branch? What about that branch? So, I mean, they really worked with me and I think, you know, they need to be recognized for what they do because it's not an easy job. And they did a great job on it. So thank you for that. One question I had, Ms. Sandman.
Yes.
From what I gather, you indicate that the day after the council meeting, that would be the 16th.
Correct.
I'm sorry, the 15th.
The 15th, I'm sorry. The meeting was the 14th.
Right. The day after the 15th. You wrote an email to Barbara Murray.
Yes.
Now, on the letter from the county, from Barbara Murray, she indicates to you, I am writing a response to your email of October 17th. Is that just a typo or was there another email that we're not aware of?
There were multiple emails that I have provided for, the Focus as well as the Daily Record.
Okay, because this was the only one we'd sent through Focus. So there were other emails?
There were other emails. It's a whole thread and it clearly delineates that at a point when Barbara says, I need a formal letter of withdrawal, I then thought, you know, I didn't get, it didn't get out until Friday when I called and they asked the question, do you require a formal letter if we do not modify 4B? And her department head said she had to check it out and they got back to us and said, no, we did not. But I also did contact, you know, I did, I did not, I'm the administrator for the community as well as for the mayor and council, and I did advise the council president and then...
I saw that. All right, thank you.
Hello, Mike Wilson, 31 Lake Drive. Just a clarifying question. I don't know who to direct this question to, but what are the next steps if this application, you know, moves forward? Is there like a follow-up vote that's going to happen, whether, like, there's some discrepancy on the appraisal? on the appraisal? I guess, right, so it's 3 million or 3.5 million? Is there going to be like a follow-up vote if they come back and say like award 3 million in this application or 3.5 million? Or what is the next, if you could just, yeah?
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Actually, uh...
All right. So, so the way it stands now is that the open space committee will vote and make a recommendation. Let's say hypothetically that they vote and recommend $3 million for Parsippany. The next step after that is, is that the freeholder board in early November, usually it's early to mid-November, will vote to accept the recommendations of the open space committee. They've always done that. And at that time, Parsippany will have a, under that scenario, a $3 million grant. As I indicated before, Parsippany has no obligation to take advantage of that grant. They have no obligation to spend that grant. That grant can simply sit in Parsippany's bank and lapse after 15 months. And it's not taking money away from other projects. The county, as I understand it, has ample money, both in current year appropriations and in prior year appropriations that are unspent, to satisfy all of the open space requests, applications that have been submitted. And it is part of the program that you have 15 months to decide whether or not you want to use that money. Again, you're not taking money away from anybody else. That's the program. You have 15 months to decide whether you want to spend the $3 million or not. And then you have two, I forget whether there's three months or six-month extensions after the 15 months expires. The purpose of that time is to give municipalities and landowners an opportunity to more fully develop and consummate their transaction, their agreement, their deal, whatever you want to call it, or not. So, Parsippany can, if it gets the $3 million, either utilize that $3 million to fully negotiate a settlement, or Parsippany could say, "Okay, we have the $3 million," and they can think about whether they want to consummate the settlement. But there's no downside to getting the money. There's no downside to getting the money. It's $3 million from the county that's appropriated to the town. And the town has time to decide what it wants to do, if anything, once it has the money. But once you lose the money, then you foreclose the opportunity to settle. You foreclose the opportunity to settle at that point. You've lost the money. What is the risk? The risk is not so much the current case that's pending in court. And I, listen, I'm not, I'm not making any guarantees when it comes to litigation. No lawyer can. Do I feel good about our case that is pending now? Yes, I do. But I don't make any guarantees. You can't make a guarantee on a matter that's before a court or a jury because you don't control the outcome of it. But I think the township has a very strong case. That's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is what comes next? What comes next? What if either this developer or some other developer files a use variance before the Board of Adjustment for multifamily housing on that property? Well, it goes before the Board of Adjustment.
Can I just ask if that, does the details of the settlement agreement, if you were to move forward in that way, is something that would be discussed?
Yes.
And then voted on by the council?
Yes. Yeah, that would be discussed in detail publicly before any action were taken by the council. That's something that would be given, you know, maximum public attention before it was, it was voted on. But again, the risk is what happens down the road, whether it be a month, two months, six months, a year, whatever the case may be, whatever timeframe, when a use variance is filed on that property. And it goes before the Board of Adjustment. Let's say the Board of Adjustment denies it. Okay, then it goes to court. And what happens in court? It's going to depend upon the proofs that are made. I can tell you this, there's a positive criteria, there's a negative criteria. Your traffic expert, back when the first ordinance was considered, indicated that multifamily would have less of a traffic impact than office because of the difference in the peak hour traffic. And that's not just his opinion. They take that out of the traffic manuals. You can't use schoolchildren legally, you can't say, "Well, there's going to be children crowding our schools and that's a reason to deny an application." That's illegal under federal law. You can't do that. So, you can't use that as a basis to deny an application. So, I mean, a use variance application would pose a, an element of risk of being successful if fully adjudicated. I'm not going to tell you that it would be. I'm not going to tell you that it wouldn't be. What I can tell you is there is a risk involved that a use variance application for multifamily housing could be approved in court over the objection of the municipality. Well, then what? Then what? Then you have another large apartment complex in Parsippany at that location that you will not be able to control. That's your risk. That's the community's risk. Now, if you want to stay here tonight and if the council wants to say, "We're willing to take that risk," okay, that's a decision that you make. But if that happens, don't look to the township attorney and say, "Why didn't you warn us?" Because I just did. If, my job is to provide advice on what the downsides are, what the consequences are, sometimes of winning. And, and so those are the issues that have to be considered. Not easy for the council, by the way. Not easy for the council at all. Not easy decisions, tough decisions, but real risks versus the possibility of forever protecting the top 10 acres with open space money, thereby guaranteeing it's never developed, eliminating any housing from that property at all, and having in its stead a Whole Foods anchor and other retail at that location with significant restrictions. That's the concept of what a potential settlement would look like. That's not up for consideration right now, but, but those are the, those are the pluses and the minuses. Those are the things that, that the council has to consider. But again, those issues are not up for tonight. That's in the future and they would be fully publicly discussed, disclosed, disseminated and debated before any action is taken.
Rudy Kastenberger, is this thing working? You hear me? Okay, look, Rudy Kastenberger, three-seater tourist, Intervale. Look, gentlemen, I don't know how many different ways the Intervale and the Troy Hills community can express our objection to a commercial development that will destroy our environment, jeopardize our health and welfare. We need the open space as originally planned for the Waterview office park. Our residential communities do not want carbon dioxide screwing from hundreds of cars and trucks idling at traffic lights and the overall congestion to get to 700 parking slots. The township council has listened to its citizens and rejected the egregious commercial encroachment. The court should be allowed to make the judgment that will support the people and the towns' councils stand on this divisive issue. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, see no one?
John, just one. I just handed the attorneys, not Jermaine, to tonight, just... I'm going to go back a couple of hours here and talk about the insurance first. Paul, I like, I know you weren't around then, but it was Ada Viskakey, who used to be the co-broker with Fairview. I forget the name of her company.
Access Point.
Thank you. She was the one that brought in the wellness program at this...
Oh, yes, she was.
She left here, Jamie.
I know. I was in a meeting, so go ahead.
We could sit here and talk about insurance, how the town...
You're not in a meeting. I apologize.
How these taxpayers got screwed with Morris County Jiffy, too. And I feel we're being screwed with this insurance.
But not. But go ahead.
Council President, I want to thank you because I'm sure you run your life this way, too. You don't just ask for one bid from somebody. You go out and you get three or four bids, whether you're putting a roof on your house, whether you're building a new house, whether you're buying a car. And if you like the car that you have now, you're probably still going to go across the street and look at the other dealership and see what the prices are. So, whoever, and the council president puts on the agenda, so I'm not trying to, you know, not thank the other guys, the other council people who very, have implemented this thing or tonight with the RFQs. But I tell you, if it was my vote here tonight, I'd bring in that gentleman from Frankel Associates. He knows his stuff. And I liked what he said about the political contributions. There shouldn't be any vendor, supplier ever give money to any politician. But again, when would all these politicians be getting these hundreds of millions of dollars from the presidential level down to the, to local level? Regarding the insurance, the only thing I was a little disappointed tonight, gentlemen, was that none of you asked the questions, what was their fee going to be? Because as we know, because Ryan Graham, I stood up here from Fairview, told us from his mouth, is he gets $38.50 per employee per month, which works out somewhere between 250 to 300,000, which clicked in my head tonight. Does on top of that, does he get a commission from those insurance companies that he brings in as a broker? So, he could be pulling maybe, maybe a million dollars. The other question I would like to have heard, and you can follow up because you have all the paperwork, we don't, and the administration, what I heard tonight about not being self-insured, that towns shouldn't be self-insured anymore. I'd like to have you guys follow up, what towns are self-insured with those brokers that are covering. Hope I didn't explain that too well. It's a long night. By the way, I actually wanted to come up first and ask, what's the World Series score? But I forgot.
Five-nothing Giants.
Five-nothing. Is it really? What inning?
I don't know. My son keeps hitting me.
Going back to this insurance though. Mr. Mayor, administration, you really should consider, well, first of all, I think that the administration did a horrible job when they sent out this RFQ because you didn't make it on a level, a playing field. You didn't explain to these other companies, oh, wellness was involved. And the first thing out of Paul's mouth, how well the wellness program has done for us. But if you remember, when you look at this year's budget, our insurance premiums aren't down. So, how well is this, how well is this wellness program doing? Really don't have anything to say here tonight about the Waterview situation. I've been very reticent on that because there's been a lot of great people that have come up here and spoken. But one thing that does concern me regarding this open space money with Waterview, sets a bad precedent, gentlemen. You take money in on this project, the next developer that comes in or the next neighborhood that comes in and says, "Hey, over there at Waterview, got 3, 4 million dollars from the county." You know, you know what I'm trying to say here on that? You know, it's, it's hard act to follow when Nick gets up here because he did a super job here tonight. And he explained, because I guess, you know, we come from different families, we never knew each other till this town, but I grew up in a family where the environment is not ours, it belongs to future generations yet unborn. That's how, why I go around all day long and I pick up garbage when I'm running and walking. But again, I still like to see this council put the pressure on the administration to get these quotes on the insurance companies. So, we have a level playing field.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Because that gentleman from, which then the town attorney cut into him, there was a large political donation made by Fairview to the Morris County PAC, which then filtered down to the mayor's campaign, plus his good buddy, Senator O'Toole or Senator O'Toole, he made a nice $7,500 contribution too to that PAC.
He did. And, well, he made a contribution to me too as well. Senator O'Toole's a good man. Good senator, too, Roy.
Thank you.
Very good senator.
Okay, see no one else come forward to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Mr. Stanton.
Consent agenda be resolved. All items listed with an asterisk considered to be routine, non-controversial by the township council be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion. These items will answer council members' request in which the case the item be removed from the consent agenda considering its normal sequence on the agenda.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
The microphones are very sensitive and they pick up all the noise.
Could you please, if you're going to have any conversations, could you just please have them out in the hallway? Thank you very much. Okay, ordinance number 2014 colon 32, Mr. Paluso.
An ordinance amending Chapter 405 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 15, Parking prohibited during certain hours on certain streets of the code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on October 21st, 2014. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held November 25th, 2014 at 7:30 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter has been reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning this ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Mr. Stanton.
Mr. Valori, asking questions. Before I go forward.
Yes, to the CFO, on this ordinance number 214 colon 33. I know we met with the finance committee. I had dialogue with you the next day concerning this amount of the $1,865,280. Did we make those corrections on some of those?
Yes, we did. Yes, and we're going to be following through some more to continue to work on those numbers.
Okay, so then you'll send me those adjustments?
Yes.
So, I can send it to the council president?
Well, then I'm going to ask for a motion to panelists until we have the correct numbers. If these aren't correct...
Let me explain what this is.
No, 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 that's not what, that's not what was said, Brian. Let the CFO explain that.
Okay. You're right about the numbers. However, what this is, is not related to the exact number of payout. Okay, this is per the budget. It's just passing, formally passing the five-year emergency that was budgeted originally in the 2014 budget. But the actual numbers, we will definitely pass on to you. Okay?
Ordinance number 2014 colon 33, ordinance of Township Parsippany, Troy Hills, County Morris, New Jersey, providing for retirement payouts or authorizing special emergency appropriation, Therefore, be resolved, the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, passed on first reading and meeting at Township Council, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held October 21st, 2014. Said ordinance be further considered for second reading, file passage meaning to be held November 25th, 2014, 7:30 PM prevailing time. Soon thereafter, matter may be reached at municipal building. Said township, with all persons interested, shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved, clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance, notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Ordinance...
Do you want me to explain it first?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I'm requesting that the council consider amending the public records ordinance. Currently, as it stands, the belief was that the police department can have its own custodian of records and the township has its own custodian of records. What we were able to determine is that there can only be one custodian of records, that's me, and what we could do is designate a deputy custodian of records to handle specific types of documents. In this case, it would be the police department because they get their own significant amount of Oprah requests. This would be designating the chief of...
The purpose is, is that obviously the police department is in a separate building.
Yes.
So, when people want information from the police department, they go with Oprah request directly to the police department, they don't go through the clerk. We could direct the public to only go through the clerk, but that, you may consider that to be an inconvenience to some people of the public who go directly to the police be an inconvenience to some people in the public who go directly to the police department, particularly when they have the records there. Sometimes, information is not timely transmitted from the police department to the clerk with regard to Oprah information. So this puts in a protocol that will ensure...
We've worked with the police department.
Right. That will ensure that that occurs and does not result in inconveniencing people who want to access public information from the police department to have to go to the clerk's office, which, if you were in the same building, you may want to do, or you may want to do anyway, but because you're in separate buildings, we felt in consultation with the clerk and the police department that this was a better way to ensure that there's a protocol in place so that the clerk is better in the loop, shall we say, on information requesting, because there are consequences to the clerk for wrongfully denying or not timely disseminating information.
And still responsible.
She's still responsible, so this puts in a better protocol to ensure that happens on a timely basis. That's what the purpose of the ordinance is.
Mr. Iglesino, does this prohibit us from naming a deputy clerk in the future?
This has no impact on a deputy clerk.
Does a deputy clerk usually have a record of custodian of records?
Well, deputy, it can or cannot be, but the issue here is not so much if you had a deputy clerk. The issue here is to provide a mechanism for a protocol and accountability with regard to information Oprah'd from the police department, because it is in a separate location. There are just, you know, additional challenges in terms of making sure that the information flow is disseminated back to the clerk on a timely basis. This sets up a protocol to ensure that happens and accountability in your government if it doesn't.
The only question I have is, this individual that we have, the police department doing this, is this going to be a civilian, or is this going to be...
This would be the police chief or his designee. So the police chief will give somebody an extra job to do in the police department.
All right. I just, I just gotta, you know, I have to say for the record, I'd rather not see someone who's a police officer doing this job that, where we need a police officer on the road. So if we could put a civilian who's well-certified and qualified, but I would not agree with having someone who's getting paid X amount of dollars to be sitting inside doing these. So are we on agreement with that? The common sense, what I'm asking? Would that have to be noted in the rest?
The problem is, we would have to change the ordinance every time someone...
Well, no. Well...
The chief, it would give the chief the managerial ability to...
I dealt with the chief with his budget. However, we're really trying to modify things, and we're trying to keep the officer safe on the road, give him enough guys, but I could not suggest that we hire or have just a police officer inside, obviously doing this, making $110,000 a year.
Well, that's not, that's not the purpose of it.
Okay. Because when you're saying he's going to designate somebody, I don't want to designate as a police officer.
Well, it's the chief's responsibility to ensure that there be accountability in the police department. He's the person. So how he carries out that function is up to him. But there is...
Yeah, but ours deals with the budget part of it. So when he comes in front of us and says that he needs, like, listen, we just gave the chief eight police officers, and we're happy to give it to them, okay? We have a major monster of overtime that we have to deal with this budget.
Right.
And then we have major payouts that we have to deal with. And I don't want to, you know, put this out to the public. But I don't want the chief making a bad decision and putting a patrolman making max salary to take care of records. So we need to take care of that internally, and these are things that we discussed in the finance committee meeting, where we, as the legislators who pass the budget, okay, we have to live with it. But we can't just say, "The chief's in charge of it." We might have to give him guidance. Okay, all right. That's my concern. But we just need to put this on the record.
Okay, so it's not going to be anybody's...
I'm helping you out in the long run with the budget.
That's why I love you, man.
Okay. Okay, okay. Because you know, when it comes to budget time.
There's another part to the ordinance, just so everybody's aware. I'm also asking you to modify the fee schedule. The state law permits that we charge 5 cents per copy for a letter size and 7 cents per copy for legal size and larger. Currently, the ordinance states it's zero charge for 1 to 20 pages, and it only has 5 cents. It doesn't include the 7 cents. So I'm asking you to amend that.
Just brings your costs in line with what the state permits you to charge, that's all.
But I'm asking you to do it for the 5 cents a page, beginning at 11 cents a page and bigger, because apparently the receipts cost about 50 cents to print each. And same with the 7 cents. It's going to start at...
Very good point.
They get theirs for free.
Okay. Ordinance number 2014:34. An ordinance of the township council, the township of Precipity, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, creating Section 4-13 custodian of records and amending Section 4-58 public records of the code of the township Precipity, Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council, the township of Precipity, Troy Hills, held on October 21, 2014, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November 25, 2014, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Resolution's on consent agenda. Mr. Stanton.
Resolution 2014-168. Resolution, township council, township Precipity, Troy Hills, authorizing submission of the municipal aid grant application to New Jersey Department Transportation for the Vale Road Improvement Project.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Before we go forward, I would like to make a motion that we table resolution 2014-169. I talked to the attorney. We have 30 days to have a broker in place. And in my opinion, tonight, we heard two pretty good presentations. And now I'd like to see Fairview come in and do their presentation. I think it's only fair to the council, as well as the public, that they come here and we get to see why they were selected.
Let's ask the mayor, does he want to have them come in?
Oh, sorry. I don't know. That's fine.
Okay, just so you're...
Right.
Okay.
Next to you.
Okay. Table it.
You need a second.
You need a second.
Yeah, he made the motion, so you need a second, and then vote.
Okay.
Is there a second to table?
Is there a second? Table it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Resolution 2014-170. Resolution of the township council, the township of Precipity, Troy Hills, expanding the investigation of the committee of the whole, as stated in resolution 2014-46, to include the mayor, James Barbario. Motion to approve.
Can I please make some comments, council president? Because if you're going to investigate him, you got to give me the opportunity.
Well, hold on. We got a motion on the floor here. Motion made by Mr. Paluso.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to state the reasons why I'm voting no. I don't believe in this committee. A committee of the whole council? This is, in my opinion, an attempt by the council to take over administrative roles in this government. And I believe it's a violation of Faulkner Plan E, and I object to this committee to begin with, and I do not support it.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
No.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, now may I make a comment, please?
Go ahead.
I'm going to, I just want to read into the record where you have your whereas. I don't know who's writing your resolutions, but I think they need a little education here, because when you accuse somebody of something, you put whereas recent developments. What recent developments are we talking about? Has revealed that certain professionals have been retained by the township attorney, John Iglesino, without prior approval. And you have to state those recent developments. What are they? Council president?
Mayor, when we conduct the investigation, it will be presented at the investigation.
No, you can't. How can, here's my point. How can you have a resolution that doesn't state? Now, I'm going to tell you this. You, now you have a, you don't have, first of all, you don't have a body of the whole. You have the same three individuals conducting a investigation. But I'm not leaving here tonight until you tell me what recent... I think I know the answer.
Okay, well, I guess you're going to be sitting here all night, then.
I think I know the answer.
Okay.
But you need to tell me.
Okay, you're going to be sitting here all night, okay?
What does this have to do with...
It will come out in the investigation.
What recent developments?
All right, mayor. Okay, you're done. Mayor, you're done. You're done. I told you, it will come out in the investigation. And Mr. DePiero.
Bobbards of law, the mayor's to be heard.
Mr. DePiero.
I don't know if you know this. Now, what are the recent developments?
It's the council's, mayor, it's a council's meeting.
It's not confidential.
During the investigation.
What recent developments? I need to know the answer.
And to address, to address...
Council president, I need to know the answer.
Mayor, they will be addressed during the investigation, mayor.
There's nothing to be addressed unless I know what it is.
Mayor.
You need to notify me of what it is. What is it?
And Mr. DePiero, referring to your comments, we are not trying to take over the administration's responsibilities. We're just looking into things that were done and how they were done.
What was done?
That is it.
What recent developments? What does it have to do?
All right, we're going to move on.
I think I know the answer.
We're going to move on.
What does this have to do with...
We're going to move on. Okay, Mr. Valori.
I'll ask you all night. What does this have to do with council president?
Okay, well, mayor, I'm not going to, when, during the investigation, it will be answered. Mr. Valori, go ahead.
Resolution 2014-171. Resolution of the township council, the township Precipity, Troy Hills, authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement with Daniel Bendis.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Just for the public, there's copies of these resolutions on the table.
171 is not here.
It's on the table. I'm sorry.
Okay, what recent developments, council president?
It's on the table.
You got to go to vote.
Council president.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, Mr. DePiero, applications, 172.
Our 2014-172, resolution of the township council, of the township of Precipity, Troy Hills, approving a new limousine license for HP Car Service, Inc.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
One more comment, council president. I'm going to go. Obviously, you violate the sunshine law, because you didn't have the agenda. You didn't have an agenda discussion about it. So obviously, you put this on last minute and you vote on it. So I will handle...
Clerk, okay, you can do that, but you can ask the clerk and was, this wasn't a last-minute thing, right? Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Yes, yesterday.
Yes, okay, it was, it's yesterday. So, and it was listed on the agenda right from the beginning. Okay. So, there you go.
We'll go to closed session.
Make a note that the mayor is leaving the meeting. Okay, we're going to go into closed session. Resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and contract negotiations, whereas minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality, the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the township council of the township Precipity, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. All right. Don't lose this drama.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Second motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.